Good evening. This meeting is now convened. The time is 5:32 PM. Board Secretary, please let the record show that all board members are in attendance this evening. Welcome to everyone who's here, all board members. Welcome to our staff and to those of you joining us from the public. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our agenda item 1.03 is the approval of the agenda. Our recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you Scott. And a second by Steve at this time. Please vote.
Aye.
Okay. Sharita, verbal. I apologize, I didn't check with the board if everyone's logged on and looking okay.
It's on there.
Ellie, you on?
It hasn't come up.
Okay. Ellie's verbal. Aye. If you need assistance, Ellie.
I don't know.
Okay. We'll move on. Thank you. We are now at 2.01, Public Comments. So as many of you know that have been with us before, I want to read this section of our public comments. The Board of Education welcomes comments about the issues being discussed. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to the public, but we will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. The Board allows for up to 10 speakers per public comment, period. The Board Chair will call on individuals in order in which they signed up. Substitutions are not permitted. Each speaker will be limited to two, three minutes and will be timed by the Board Secretary. And to assist you with that three minutes, you will note that there are timers on the screens, so please watch that carefully, so I don't, I'm not required to stop you. Comments must be acceptable for business and family-friendly environment. Inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will not be tolerated. It is inappropriate to address the board about an individual student, students, individual staff members by name in an open meeting. If you had concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. If you have materials that you want to share, please place them in the tray on the podium. You will notice it is on the tray to the side of the podium, and they will be distributed to board members following the meeting. So at this time, our first speaker, is that, thank you. I'd like to invite Michael Hasty to come to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. Mike Hasty back again. Tonight, I want to address an issue that I think is impacting education in the district, and that's what I perceive at our school when my kids go is a lack of discipline. Discipline happens, and what I mean by that is we have positive reinforcement of positive behaviors, which is fantastic. There's positive referrals, so we reward kids for doing good things, and that's awesome. But we have lack of negative discipline for negative consequence, or negative consequences for negative actions for students who disrupt the class. And at my kid's school, all three of my kids, first, third, and fourth grade, have had, since the beginning of the school year, constant disruptions of the same kids. And it's these kids' disruptions that are taking away from the other 15, 16, or however how many students are in the class, their learning. And as a school, we want to build that firm foundation of education for our kids. And I just, I feel that at some point, you have to look at actually implementing a negative consequence to a child, which nobody wants to really talk about. It's a pretty touchy subject amongst parents, but you have to. We take them to what I, it's called the care room, and you talk to them about what they did, which is fantastic, and that's awesome. But like in the real world, when you break the law, the judge will talk to you, and then he's going to sentence you. We don't give any negative discipline to our kids, but we do the positive, so we have no balance. And to me, that's kind of withdrawing and taking away from the other kid's ability to learn, especially in my kids' classes. We hear when we pick the kids up, the same, same teachers calling the principal to the same classrooms, and my kids like to gab. It's the same kids. It's again, and again, and again. And at what point do you have to address that, hey, this is literally the definition of insanity? We take this kid out, we talk to him, we put him back. We take him out, we talk to him, we put him back. The disruptions continue, which, and especially in elementary school, and you know, as a kid, when I was a kid, I was a class clown. I got kicked out of class, I got in school, out of school, lunched detention, wasn't a perfect student. It happens. But you know what? For me personally, the worst thing was, don't call home. Now, we can't control people at home and how they discipline their kids, but what we can do is set expectations for our students. We can set this expectation, set these bars, and when they don't meet them, this happens. It's very simple to say, if A happens, B's going to happen. So that's just something I'd like to maybe look, if you guys look into and address, that maybe we actually have to consider doing some negative consequences for negative actions amongst students. Because at some point, that one student's distracting 15 or 16 other students and hindering their learning, and as an academic institution, we want to build a firm foundation for these kids. These are tomorrow's doctors, lawyers, and pilots. We got entrepreneurs and innovators, and when we have these constant disruptions and lack of discipline, what we're doing is we're setting a bad example, and we're preventing the other kids from learning. So thank you for your time. I appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you. Okay, next, I would like to invite Sophia Leonard. Is that correct, Sophia?
Yeah. So for those of you who don't know me, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Sophia Leonard. I'm a current senior at Central High School in the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program, and since July of this year, I've served on our current facilities improvement task force as a student representative for the tens of thousands of SPS students. I'd like to speak on behalf of this bond issue, first, offering a message of unity, showcasing that even though this was a diverse group with varied opinions, these are the individuals that have become your experts on this issue, and this is a report and an issue that you should listen to this committee on. Next, there's two key things I would like to discuss. First of all, I would like to offer my perspective as a student on the projects outlined in the current bond report, and secondly, I would like to address some of the common counter arguments to this issue that I've heard throughout my duration on the task force. The first school was Pipkin Middle School, which has sadly the lowest condition score of any of our SPS schools. This alone makes it a priority within our district. This then takes us into the safety and security projects, including things vital for not only our students, but our community at large, when we consider things like tornado shelters. Now, there is an important thing to note in this line item, that as discussed by the task force, we would like this to focus on capital improvement projects, not on technology and software that could potentially become out of date by the time this issue is paid off. Next, up to Pershing Middle and Elementary School. Not only is this a building without enough space to even offer one eighth-grade commencement, instead it had to be split up into multiple ones, it is also a school that its administrators and communities has asked to be split into both an elementary and middle school for years prior to this. In the task force's report, we outline the idea that this is something that should be taken up, and is also the most cost-effective option for this. The last issue I'd like to talk about within this part is Robertson Elementary School. A school that without a doubt has roaches in it, asbestos tiles that are currently held to its ceilings by washers. This is not a safe learning environment for our students. And now, onto some of the common counter arguments to this issue that I've heard. First of all, is the cost of Pershing School. The reason why some of these projects cost so much is because there's simply that much to do in these buildings. The next step was falling enrollment. After the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic and with the poor condition of our schools, it's no wonder that we've seen enrollment downturn. But with capital improvement projects in our schools, this is something that we could turn around. The last and most important point I have to bring up was the argument that student achievement needs to happen before we even consider touching these schools. If you buy into that argument, you were of the opinion that we don't care if a student isn't getting enough food at home, doesn't have a support network at home, only their scores on the iReady or the Galileo. Furthermore, we need to have our building improvement to support student achievement. Multiple academic studies from the 1990s support this idea. If you do not go to the idea that you need building improvement to facilitate student advancement, then you're both ignorant of the science and ignorant of the well-being of our students. It's for these reasons that I appreciate the board's consideration of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise, can I make a comment? Actually, we don't make comments, so you can do that in Board Comments. But keep that in mind. Danny? Is Danny Loschel here? Oh Danny. Okay. Moving on to Pat Scott.
Three things: curriculum, test scores, and the building project. This is what parents think needs to happen in this district. Solid, time-tested curriculum, physical books, smarter use of tech, foreign language, grammar spelling, changes in discipline policy, focus on excellence, not activism. I had a copy of, Dr. Latham had an interview with NBC just before school started, maybe right around the time school started, acknowledging some of the problems that we have in this system. You probably remember that, saying, we, and her quote was, "We will need to start from two years ago." I hope we're starting from two years ago. I hope that's already in the process. Springfield Public Schools' education process has long been in trouble, long trouble, long before COVID. I would like to see this board, if I were a business person, if I were on the board, I'd like to see an evaluation of the top-heavy administration. I'd like to see the percentage that we have here, and I'm not meaning to be disrespectful to anybody that I hear Dr. this and Dr. that in charge of this, in charge of that, with dozens of people under them. People have good intentions, but is it working? The smaller districts around Springfield, by far, whether it's numbers in a small school, they don't have this much administration. We've got five, we're working on five buildings now to fill up administration. I think we need an accounting for that. Are we on the national level? Where are we at? As a board, you can ask for that. As a taxpayer, I'd like to see it. What's our administration cost? When we audited in 2008, it was high then, 12%. I don't even know what it should be, but I would hope you would ask. So many new things are tried. I still remember an example, 10 or 11 years ago, I've long been involved in the school situation. Some doctor, she came from NIXA, setting up a new, I mean, this is typical, a new spelling program. No more spelling tests, take the words, cut them up, put them together the way they sound, no more spelling tests. Well, we're not on that anymore. She's gone, and that's gone, but it's just kind of typical of what we do. With regard to the bond issue, I hope that we will put that off till 2024. Four people on the task force voted to do that. It was four years ago that that bond, that that study was done. Lot of changes are going about in our district. We don't know what the feds or any government is going to do with regard to private schools, districting. One example, Robertson School, projection there, the capacity is 350. It's now in the 180s. That's an area that's not growing. If we need to send kids somewhere, send them to Fremont, send them to Weller. We don't have a problem sending kids from Portland over to Sunshine. So I think it needs to stop and go on the ballot for 2024. Somebody asked me, what's the best thing about Springfield schools? And the first thing I say is teachers.
Pat, your time is up. Thank you.
The second thing I say is buildings. We have good buildings, but it's not fixing anything. Thank you.
Next speaker, Tom Prater.
Thank you. It's nice to be back and be on this side of the podium, frankly. I want to thank you all for establishing the task force on facilities again, and thank you for allowing Bridget and David to head it again. Without their leadership, I don't think we would have come to the, we would not have had the efficient discussion that we had. And also to Dr. Mulford and Dr. Shaw for giving us the staff support. They really were there with all the members, and very, very helpful. We had robust discussions of all the buildings, the consequences that were involved, came to a very strong conclusion over what needs to be done, and you'll see that in their report. Came to an almost unanimous decision that the bond should be on the ballot for April of '23. Now, we've dropped the ball in your court. These aren't our dollars. These are taxpayer dollars. So I hope, and I think the task force recommendation will show, that we hope you will ask the taxpayers what they feel. They feel our buildings are adequate, which we heard some, one person make a comment, oh, this building's adequate. We don't want to be known for adequate buildings. I hope you'll allow the task force recommendation to go in April. If you do, I think there are a couple of things to think about. We've already established a strong team to educate the public, to raise funds for a bond campaign. It was very effective last time, and I think we can speak to our successes, because not only last time did we finish what we promised we would do, when the district didn't finish they promised what they would do, but also added Hillcrest and finished it, added York Elementary and finished it, using the same tax dollars. So we've got that in our favor. We've got the fact that the committee has recommended a no-tax increase bond, so nobody's property taxes go up, it extends the levy. So it's going to be up to you. Thanks for allowing this to happen again. I think it was a very good process and very effective, and we've got, you've got a whole bunch of community-minded folks out there ready to work for it.
Thank you. I'm left. Thank you. Hey. Moving on to our 3.01, our information reports. At this time, we have a report from our foundation for Springfield Public Schools. And there you are.
Thank you. Thanks Denise, thanks for having me tonight.
Natalie Murdock, by the way. Sorry Natalie, I didn't.
You don't know. So I'm going to start with just kind of a snapshot of our last fiscal year update. So the slide that you're seeing here is something that we present to our board of directors on a monthly basis, and we look at that point at where the foundation is for the month and where we are for that fiscal year to date. So what you all are seeing are the numbers from last fiscal year. So we operate essentially in three pillars, based on our mission. We raise money, we manage money, and we distribute money for the benefit of Springfield Public Schools. So what you can see in that first column is where we came in with money that we raised. So we raised over $1.3 million last year, and in our, the money that we raised comes from individuals, from businesses, from special events. You have a list there of special events that we have. We have a lot of individuals that do planned giving, and they establish funds with us. So we'll see a little more in that under the manage column, but we had a really great year with over 1,000 donors. We also, at our board meetings, we look at our new donors and our repeat donors. We actually have a really high retention rate for donors, which is really great and speaks to our community. And then in the manage section, you'll see, we are a traditional foundation, so we're managing over $6 million. That was the end of June 30th. Looks a little different than that now, as the market has impacted us. But we are managing funds in basically three sort of categories: permanent endowments, scholarship endowments, and then we also manage some temporary funds, and you can see the breakdown of where that money comes from. So we established five new funds this year, all permanent funds, which is great. That is great for the future of the foundation, the future of Springfield Public Schools. The Judith Irwin Endowment Fund was actually a planned gift payout from a longtime supporter of the foundation, and that fund specifically supports early childhood education. And we had three funds, scholarship funds set up that benefit Parkview. Parkview has really great alumni support. So the Parkview Alumni Scholarship, Zachary Mustang Scholarship, Zachary was a teacher at Parkview who passed away, and the Trotter Family Scholarship all benefit Parkview, and then the Glendale Class of 1967 also set up a permanent scholarship fund. So we work with these donors really on a daily basis to provide that long-term support to students and teachers, and the donors actually set up the guidelines and the criteria for how that money is able to be used, so that, and then the earnings from the fund impact how we're able to use those funds. And then you can see what we distributed last year. So we distributed over $850,000. And kind of a breakdown of where that comes from, we did $93,000 in student scholarships, over $500,000 through the funds that we manage and through direct donations. So we also take donations from the community where we provide that tax receipt to them, and we actually just send that money straight over to the school, so it gets to provide immediate needs. And then we did over $200,000 in our Back to School program, and $23,000 through our Pickup Project campaign, which I had chaired with you all in the past. So that's just kind of a snapshot of where we have been the past year. So we kicked off our year with lots of excitement, awarding over $219,000 through our Back to School Grant program. We have already awarded over $613,000 in grants and scholarships this year, which is really great. I'm not even halfway through the year yet. And we are also very excited to continue our partnership with the district on the SPS Ambassadors program, which I know that Dr. Latham has talked about. I haven't even shared this with her and her team yet, but we have gotten about half of the survey results, and we have 21 ambassadors this year. We had 14 last year. And the 21 surveyed, we've had nine people respond to the survey, and we've had really great survey responses. And they were really, really impressed by Dr. Latham and enjoyed hearing from her. They enjoy visiting Boyd and the tour of General Services, which, anybody that can enjoy General Services, like, I think it was the behind-the-scenes, it was definitely the tour guide as well. But that behind-the-scenes look that these folks get to have, a building that they wouldn't normally visit, they were really impressed by all of that. So we've had really great feedback from them, and we're looking forward to the year ahead with that group, and they are as well. And we're also in the middle of our United Way Employee Campaign, so we partner with United Way for this campaign to Springfield employees. We have incredibly generous staff in Springfield Public Schools, and they support both the United Way and the foundation through this campaign, so it's a super exciting time for us. And I, of course, just want to say thank you to you all and to Dr. Latham and her team. We are just so incredibly honored and grateful to be able to serve Springfield Public Schools, and incredibly grateful to these folks. We have such great partnerships with folks in the district, and we appreciate you all so very much. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
So thank you Natalie. So do we have any questions, comments from board members?
I just want to say thank you for everything that you do, and it's you and Tina and?
And Edie.
Edie. So the three of you are managing all of this, and I appreciate that you guys truly are cheerleaders for the district. If somebody wanted to be an ambassador, what's the process?
There is an application process for ambassadors. So it's closed right now. It will open back up, probably like in the summer, we'll open it back up for the next ambassador year. So we're looking to keeping that group around 20 or so people. There's a little bit of a reason for that. We want one to be able to make really meaningful connections with those folks, because we want them to continue to stay involved, and we hope that they will become donors, if they're not already donors. But it's also just great to be able to work with a smaller group, and they get to have a lot of access and ask a lot of questions on those tours, so the smaller group just is better. But we had a lot of applicants, so we hope that those folks that didn't get selected this year will try again next year.
And I like going to the Pickup Project page, so it's educators in our classrooms who may need something immediate or something extra, that they can just ask the community to go and fund. So it's always fun to go see those projects and to help the teachers out.
We have 16 Pickup Project campaigns online right now, so have a lot of traction for that, and just a variety of things that teachers need, and you can see exactly what they need, so you, if you want to fund it or support it, we encourage you to do that.
Natalie, I have a question. Your scholarships that you guys give out, do you guys work through the school counselors, or do you guys work directly through your foundation?
We work with the school counselors, so all of our scholarship criteria, scholarship applications and the criteria are on our website. So students will apply, and that application is also sent to the high school counselors. So each high school has a committee. We serve on that committee as well, and that committee will then select what students get the scholarship. So we work really closely with each high school during that scholarship season. Yeah.
Thanks.
Natalie, on that 93,850 student scholarships that you distributed in '21, '22, would you kind of have an idea of how many recipients that involved?
It was a little less than 100 students, but right around 100. Well, 100 scholarships, some students got more than one scholarship, so it would be fewer students, but.
Thank you.
As a board, oh, go ahead Scott. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Like everybody else said, appreciate all that you guys do. Three people manage a lot over there, and I just want to say thank you. I was lucky to be on the board back in 2001, you know, a long, long time ago, and it's a great organization then, and even better now. So thank you for all the work that you put into it. Just want to ask you a couple of questions. First of all, the ambassador program is great. I mean, it's for any age, but father-in-law, 83 years old, soon to be 84, is on the committee, you know, and he loves it. He gets to go on some of the old tours, and how do I get a tour of the General Services?
I bet Tyler would pick you out. That's the right place to go.
And I got to attend a couple of meetings last year, and if the board members can go, you know, that would be great too, you know, because I learned a lot from it as well. But the Get Back to School Campaign, which I just love, what's the schedule for that this year?
We awarded grants last month, yeah, in September, $219,000. We plan to do a second grant cycle in either November or December, because we've still got money coming in. So Tina is here tonight, too. She does all of our fundraising, and she's still working on it, so the fundraising never ends. So we'll plan to do hopefully another grant cycle, because we had a lot of, really, the grants go through an allocations process, and they're ranked, and that's how it's decided what grants are funded. And there were a lot of really high-ranking grants that still didn't quite make the cut with the $219,000, so we're excited to be able to do a second grant cycle before the end of the calendar year.
That's great, because I know a lot of teachers put a lot of work into that.
Very much, yeah. Really great projects.
Anything else? I was just going to follow up by saying that we're very fortunate as a school board, that we have two school board members that are former foundation board members, and so that's very helpful. And thank you again for all the work the three of you do, because they are on call all the time, because many of our graduating classes in Springfield that want to have their reunions at their high schools can call, and one of the, especially of these two, will go and provide tours and give a little talk about what the foundation does and encourage some of our alums to give back to their schools.
We'll always take your donations.
And they will do that at all hours and weekends, and so, you know, but that's a give back to the schools, which is a give back to the kids.
Yeah, and so many, so many alumni want to be a part of that, and each of our high schools have endowment funds, and those were largely established by alumni groups really just caring about the future of their school and those students, so.
Yeah, so it's great. So anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next update. We have our SCPTA annual update, and we would like to welcome Donna Pettiford to the podium, and thank you for being here, and please share with us.
Thank you for having me. As you mentioned, my name is Donna Pettiford, and I'm currently serving as the president of Springfield Council of PTAs. And the first thing I would like to do is to thank all of you for your service to our community as board members. We appreciate your volunteerism, and we recognize you as true public servants, and so just thank you very much for that. Springfield Council of PTAs was organized in 1913, so we are close to reaching our 110-year mark of supporting students in Springfield Public Schools. We've had a very busy year so far. We participated in the Back to School Bash, and we promoted our clothing bank during the Back to School Bash, and that was very successful for us, because we've seen a lot of increase of visits at our clothing bank. We've operated our clothing bank consecutively for over 50 years, currently at Studi. We share that space with the Kiwanis, and they operate a shoe bank there. So students are able to come to the clothing bank three times a year. They'll get five shirts, three pairs of pants, five underwear, five socks, used shoes if we have them, a coat during the winter, and a jacket when they visit. They're also able to get a new pair of athletic shoes from the Kiwanis Shoe Bank if the kids are there to try the shoes on. And so that is our biggest, our biggest event, or our biggest program that we operate. Last year, we saw close to 1,300 visits from students and families, and this year, we're already at 800, so that kind of gives you an idea of the increase of visits that we've had. The reason is twofold, I think, because we have been promoting it. We've been to the SPS universities as well, promoting there and at the Back to School Bash, but also because of post-pandemic, we just see. bash, but also because of post-pandemic, we just seen a lot more need from our families. And so, we're really proud of our volunteers that have worked at the clothing bank consecutively throughout pre-pandemic, during the pandemic. They kept the clothing bank open, you know, the volunteers on the front line, and we're very proud of them for doing that. Let's see. We are back to meeting in person this year, so we're excited about that. Our meetings are the first Wednesday of each month, and what we try to do is be in, have our meetings in our schools, so that all of our volunteers can see the different school buildings and see some of the things that we've done in support of the bond issues that we passed over the years, and also to see that we might not be finished yet, that we might still have things to do if we're in a school that hasn't had the opportunity, you know, to be upgraded or be remodeled or renovated. So, we are excited to be back in person in, with our meetings, and also, we're excited to get our volunteers back into the schools, because we feel like it's a really important thing for kids to see parents volunteering in schools, not just their own parents, but other kids' parents as well. We think that really shows them that our community is there for them and supporting them as well. So, we're excited about that. We continue to offer training and support. Springfield Council of PTAs trains and supports leaders at all of our schools. We have PTA units in most of our schools, and that's part of our goal and part of our mission is to help them become leaders in their PTAs as well. We're refocusing on our Reflections Program this year. Reflections is an art program. It's an opportunity for students to create various artwork in various forms and to compete on a national level, because that's a national PTA program. We have a local contest or event where we showcase the student artwork. We also have the winners that are, the winners at each school are able to be showcased at the Missouri PTA statewide showcase event, and then also, we have some winners that move on up to a national level, and they're able to be showcased there as well. We are looking forward to hosting our Founder's Day banquet again in person. We've put that on hold throughout the pandemic, and that's an opportunity for us to come together once a year and celebrate our history, and also to recognize our volunteers that we have, our many PTA volunteers in our school, and that's a really big and important event for us. So, we're looking forward to hosting that at Hillcrest in March, and we'll be sending all of you an invitation so that you can come and celebrate with us. We continue to be connected to the bigger PTA community. We are part of the national organization. We've just celebrated 125 years as a national PTA, and we continue to be the oldest and largest advocacy organization in the country, working exclusively on behalf of children and families. We're connected to National PTA. We have a couple of people on our Springfield Council of PTAs that are on National PTA committees, and one of our volunteers is also a volunteer at the state level. We are advocates. We have a very strong voice, not only at the federal level, but also at the state level, and we continue to support better policies for children and families at all levels that we can, local, state, and national. We hope that you'll join us on the first Wednesday of each month at our council meetings, and we'll, our schedule is on our website, scptamo.com. You're welcome to come to any of our meetings. We also hope that you'll come volunteer with us at the clothing bank. I promise you, your bucket will be filled. It's, our, the families that shop there are so grateful for that service, and they are very, very expressive about that, so I promise you, it will be a good experience for you. If you can't come on a Thursday when we're open, we will be open a couple of Saturdays this year. Our first Saturday will be October 29th, and we'll be there from 10:00 a.m. to noon, so you're welcome to come then as well. That's all I have. Again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it, and happy to answer any questions if you have.
So, thank you so much, Donna. So, this time, do board members have any questions for Donna and the hard work that they do? I know a couple of weeks ago, Mary Ann shared with us some of the great things going on at the clothing bank, and she was very complimentary and talked to us about that, so anyone else you want to...
Definitely, it's definitely a good feel. Couple hours, if you want to volunteer, it's definitely very special.
Thank you for that. We appreciate, we appreciate that.
We appreciate you. Thank you so much, Donna.
Why bother me here? I have a couple of questions for you. Thank you again for all the work that you do. I know that our families appreciate the work that you all are doing. If we had, if you had a wish list of some of your greatest needs for your clothing bank, particularly as we move into winter, what would those needs be?
Well, our needs change every time that we're open, and I would tell you that typically boys' jeans are always needed. They wear out their jeans more than girls do for some reason, but as soon as I say that, they'll need girl sizes, you know, for middle school and high school girls. We always can use coats in the winter especially. So, it changes. If they have a need, they usually post it on their Facebook page. So, if you'll look for the PTA Clothing Bank on Facebook, that's where you'll get the best updates for that. But it does change, but we are very fortunate that when we put something out there that we need it, we usually get it. All of our schools have PTA units that are collecting and donating and volunteering as well, so we will use it if we get it.
One other question, as you mentioned that, sorry, that most of the schools had a PTA unit, but there are a few that did not. Do you know of any barriers that exist of why those schools don't have them? Is there anything that the school district or the board can do to support those schools having a PTA?
So, I've been in PTA for a long time. I've been on the council board consecutively for about 20 years, and I've noticed that some of our title schools have a really hard time managing the business of PTA. And so, that's been something that we always try to work with. We always try to support them. What I find is that they're very good fundraisers, and so they like to do that, but it's also hard for them to manage money sometimes. I would encourage them to really be smaller on their fundraising efforts and be bigger in their volunteerism and do things that support the school. We are always looking for parents to volunteer. That's also a hard thing. You have, you know, single family, single-parent households, and you have both parents working. It's hard sometimes for them to take that extra time to volunteer, so we see that, but we continually, if there's an issue with the district, we are always in contact with them. We have principals that volunteer and are on our board. We have one from the elementary, one from middle school, one from high school. Dr. Hackenworth is also serving on our board, so we are very well-connected, and when we need things, they listen to us and they help us as much as they can.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to just say, I can reiterate, thank you. You know, PTA to me is so important to this community. They raise a lot of money for the schools, the individual schools, and provide the needed support for those schools otherwise they wouldn't get, and they help support with the bond issue, hoping that, I assume you will again this year. We hope so at least. And the clothing bank is invaluable with all the, hearing you say that, you know, the number of families has increased so much. We really appreciate the efforts that put in there and appreciate the reflection program as well. That's a really cool program.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And when I was council president before, your wife was very active in PTA, and I appreciate your family and things that they've done there as well.
What's the theme for Reflections this year?
The theme this year, so every year, they have a student contest for the theme, so the theme is submitted by student. This year, it's Show Your Voice. So, they will use the theme and reflect on what that means to them, and they will create either a musical piece or a visual arts piece, photography, dance, probably forgetting something, literature. So, there's a lot of ways that they can express that, and so, we're just looking for, to build that back up. It's been really difficult when our volunteers couldn't be in the buildings to support that program, but we're looking, we're hoping to have a better turnout this year than we have the past few years because of COVID.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Great reports. Okay, moving on to 4.0, preliminary contracts, agreements, and change orders. Dr. Mulford?
Good evening, boards. Good to see you. I know we got a couple of questions via email on the K-Cob, and I think we got those answered, but do you have any other questions that we can answer for you?
Just as, to the board as a reminder, these items were brought forward for review and then asked questions, but we will still have a couple of weeks to continue to ask questions. We would not vote on these items until October 25th at our regular meeting. So, questions at this time, please let me know. I'm looking, yes, Mary Ann?
Thank you for the answers to those questions by email. I have one question with respect to one of those that came up, RSM US LLP. So, if you can explain a little bit more about who this is, what they do, how it works, and when can we expect an update, because it relates to a matter that came up in June?
Sure. So, while I give a brief summary, I'm going to have Bruce join me, because he can get more information. But back in the summer, as you all recall, we had quite a discussion around data privacy. And the last time we've had that reviewed, I think it was the consensus of the board that we kind of review that and make sure we're aligned with best practices. So, RSM is the company that Dr. Muhammad County, uh, Kentucky, Muhammad County is referring to. It's at the bottom of the first page on the 15 to 499 K-Cob. So, this is the company that we contract with as consultants around a variety of technology, security-type things, and so, we are requesting to engage them around the student data privacy, and they will be reviewing our contracts and our current policy and advising us on how to improve upon that based on best practice and current standards. So, Bruce, I'm going to let you kind of add to that.
Yes. So, RSM, like Dr. Mulford said, is a consulting company, kind of like BKD, four of us. We've engaged with originally McLeodry, they changed their name about five, six years ago, about eight, nine years ago, and what we've engaged with them are a review of the entire technology department initially, specifics around cybersecurity practices, helping us establish a cybersecurity governance program in the district along with different policies and procedures. They've engaged with K-12 districts across the nation and bring a lot of different consultants and expertise to the table. With this specific item, we actually are engaging with a little different part of RSM, more around privacy. So, instead of the cybersecurity world, what we're really talking about here is also the data privacy side. So, the individual that we are engaging with at RSM is a former chief privacy officer for Fortune 500 Company. She has extensive experience in terms of kind of the best practices at an industry level. So, what they will do is actually do discovery with us of what are policies we have in place, what are the procedures we have in place specifically with how we use our data privacy requirements. We've also done research with other, like, districts in Missouri, especially, shout-out to our Raytown counterpart, they're kind of a leader in a lot of this. They were great to kind of sit down and talk with us around how they approach it and have a more lay-term type of policy that they utilize, whereas ours has a lot of legal pieces in it. So, what we've provided a couple of other resources to RSM and kind of tasked them with what's a way that we can make sure we're covering all the needs of our students, making sure that our privacy policy covers the legal side, but also is a lay-readable type of piece at the same time. They're very clear, they're not going to advise us legally, because that's not their role. Their role is to do research around best privacy practices, both in industry, then specifically K-12, then review our pieces and give us recommendations of how we can improve that, and we can work to implement those recommendations.
Bruce, what's the timeline on that?
Yeah, so for the timeline, I think it was roughly a six-week engagement for them to work with us. We'll have a project manager on their side. They'll engage on the discovery piece, and they'll do the research, and then they'll bring back to our executive leadership the recommendations. So, I think we would see that roughly, they've got a little bit of lead time, so pending approval later this month, issuing some signing of that statement of work. We're looking probably at December engagement, because they've got about a full week lead time for those resources to be available weeks after that, so we're looking sometime in January, February, to get the recommendation.
So, and plenty time before the next round of contracts, software contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Sorry. Did you, maybe I missed this. Are we, did you say that once we get that back, that we'll get some sort of, I guess, presentation or update on what the recommendations were?
We did not say anything about that, but we will do whatever you all want done, so...
Well, I'd like to request that as one board member, if we can get some sort of presentation on what recommendations they made.
I did have a question. It's okay. It has in here, a statement of, or a sentence, sole source purchased for compatibility. Yeah, maybe that was answered in the email, I didn't remember that, but how's it, sole source for compatibility?
So, we currently have a master service agreement with RSM for these consulting services that were established back when we first engaged with them, and so that compatibility is because they have prior knowledge, prior research, and also confidential information about the district that others would not. So, they're kind of uniquely positioned to be able to provide these services, which is where that sole source comes in.
Okay. All right. So, does that mean the language that we have currently is language that they drafted? Or they're just...
Or the master service agreement?
Yeah. This is the first time we've engaged them on the student data privacy.
Because we have language, is that what it's called? We have language, legal language that says, that lays out our privacy policy, right?
Oh, the student data privacy requirements is actually developed internally, I mean, IT and risk management with legal review.
This is the first time we're going to have this consulting firm look at what we've homegrown, right? Homegrown...
Making sense for more than that.
To simplify. I'm just, I'm just paraphrasing. I'm just clarifying. Did I hear that correct? I heard that, okay.
I'm following. I just wanted to clarify that they weren't essentially auditing their own...
What they already did. Exactly. Thank you.
Good.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you. Good questions.
We all learn from that.
Thank you all.
And recall, we have a couple of weeks to review this, think about it, look at it, and ask additional questions. So, board policy, 5.01, there are no policies for review, so we can move on to 6.0, new business. So, we have approval of transportation routes, and Dr. Travis Shaw is here to present that to us.
Good evening. Each October, I bring this item for your attention. Missouri law does require that boards of education approve routes for school bus travel in order to receive reimbursement of expenses. Regular year routes must have initial approval by the end of October and then final approval by the end of June, which you all went through that process back in June. Special education, extended school year routes also must be approved. Attached in board docs are the two lists of routes for both extended school year, which is known as ESY, and then the regular initial routes for the school year. We are currently running 108 bus routes with approximately 7,900 students, and then we also run 33 routes midday on top of that. So, this is for your first read. You will vote on this in two weeks, but if there's any questions right now you have, I will try to answer those.
Questions? Scott? You're looking kind of thoughtful.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. We will save our questions for two weeks. Okay. I think you're going to stay with us for Field H-back Upgrade.
I'm pleased to be able to bring this item for your consideration back in January, February. I wasn't able to bring this to your consideration, because we received no bids when we put this out the first time. We received one at the time for Wilder, but none for Field, and so, we had waited, and we put this back up to bid. We did receive four bids, which we were very pleased with. This is on our list for capital...
This is on our list for capital improvements due to the IAQ assessment that was completed as well as the system is simply, it's in a cycle and needs to be replaced. Work will replace all of the existing split system furnaces and rooftop units with new variable refrigerant flow systems. We call those VRF, packaged rooftop units, dedicated outside air units, which Field currently does not have, and new building automation system. The construction demolition, all of the hazardous material removal is also included. So of the four bids, the lowest responsible bid was from WMC Mechanical. This is again funded by, through our capital funds, which was allocated through SRT2 as part of that budget with a total cost of $1,584,535. This work, these bids are guaranteed so that we can do this work in the summer. So we hit this sweet spot, they're going to hold those bids. That way they can also begin procuring all of the equipment, materials, and be ready to start as soon as we finish school. What questions do you have at this time?
Questions? So you may, may have mentioned this just before, but to me, it's a little concerning that we sent out bids and got zero bids, first time. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, basically, what we were experiencing in January was a very flooded market, and things have slowed. Construction has slowed a little bit. We began receiving multiple bids on multiple projects, which we didn't have. If you remember the launch building that we had all of the 1.5 budget of renovation, we had seven bids on that particular project, which is not something we've had. So the market is shifting a little bit, and so we're getting a lot more competition, which this project, when it was estimated cost, was a year and a half ago at 1.54 million, and the bid came in at 1.58 billion. So not much of an increase. We do have engineering costs involved in that, so only about a 6% increase over that time, which was very good concerning, considering what it could have been.
This is good.
Yes.
That's why you started this out by saying you're excited to bring this.
Right.
Happy to bring this to us. Okay, very good. So again, we, is this action?
It's not.
Ask a question, please.
Yes, Kelly.
So you said we have four bids, and this is the lowest responsible bid. Was it in fact the lowest bid?
It was.
And what, just a quick explanation, what, what would be considered responsible? Like what factors could you use?
Great question. So responsible is a very subjective term, but responsible, we check references, we verify that they have the labor to be able to accomplish this, they have the resources and the subs under them to accomplish this. This is work that our engineer, they've worked with this company. And so all of those things, there's no red flags that make them irresponsible contractor. If they've not done work with us, that would say it said, we don't want to do work with them again. So all of those things, again, lend themselves to being a responsible bidder.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, but we're not dismissing you yet.
Right.
Stay here with us. So we're moving on to our transportation bus purchase, so.
So each year, we, in the past, for the past five years, I believe, we have allocated a million-dollar placeholder in capital funds to purchase school buses. We set that dollar amount so that we could hopefully purchase around 10 buses each year to be able to continue our rotation on around a 15 to 16, more than 16-year length of time that we have a bus. As you will see by the prices listed, we're not going to be able to accomplish that this year because pricing over last year to this year is up almost 20% per school buses. It's no different than automobiles if you were to go purchase one, or even try to sell yours, that's what you're going to be seeing. So we did receive these bids on October 3rd for both 77 passenger regular education buses as well as midsize special education buses in both diesel and propane. The district has applied for a grant to assist with the purchase of propane buses. The quantity of each bus type will be determined once we know whether we get the grant or not for the propane. And so our intent is we hope to be able to purchase four diesel buses, and then we hope to introduce more propane buses into our fleet. Propane buses have been around for several years, but it's been just until the last year or so that our transportation team has really felt that they have come to the point where they're worth really diving into and having the robust engines that are needed as far as that goes. It would require very little infrastructure on our part to be able to accommodate propane buses, but the advantages are lengthy when it comes to propane buses, and which is why we're wanting to go for that route. If we receive the grant, we would receive $15,000 towards each propane bus that we would want to purchase. So we're looking at four of those. So when you look at the pricing, a propane bus is roughly 9,000 more than a diesel regular education bus. If we get their grant for that, it makes it actually cheaper than the diesel bus. For long-term maintenance and labor, we've seen studies up to 50% less on propane buses. The fuel for propane is much cheaper than diesel. The, one of the biggest issues for diesel is even though although propane and diesel, the diesel we use, they meet those EPA standards, very comparable. Diesel buses, you have, they require exhaust after treatment systems as well as the diesel exhaust fluid, the DEF that you will see. And so those things add quite a bit of expense, up to just in the DEF, almost 20,000 annually. So Jonathan Sheldon, who's here, our director of transportation, and his team has done a lot of research around this. I first spoke to Jonathan probably three or four years ago after I received a presentation from the Osho School District, who was purchasing a lot of these buses. And Jonathan just said, we're not ready yet. The buses aren't where they need to be, the engines aren't what they need to be, they don't have the power that diesel has, there were just too many cons. All of those things have gotten much, much better over time, which is why we want to go down this road with four of them. And then as we continue to move forward, there's always going to be a place for diesel. Diesel buses are great for long trips on the highway, more so than propane. A lot of our metro routes, though, is where we can really utilize this and save the district significant dollars. And they continue, they all have the same safety mechanisms and so forth. But, so the request this evening and for your consideration in the next two weeks is the pricing that you see in front of you, and then the number of buses that we would be able to purchase would be based on that grant, but we would not exceed the million dollars that's allocated within the budget. Now, that was a lot, so I will stop.
Questions?
Steve?
I bet 20,000 for DEF.
Are we looking per diesel bus? Is that correct, annually?
No, I don't believe, that's just the amount total, right, Jonathan?
For all the?
Yeah. 150 to 175 gallons weekly.
On a shelf life or service life for a diesel versus propane, might be the difference. Extended life by propane, by years, months, what are we looking at? Just curious.
So they do, there is the potential for them to last longer because the engines burn much cleaner, and so there's the potential for them to last longer.
And what, what might that potential be, look like?
Right off the top of my head, but we can certainly research it.
That'd be great.
Give out information to you over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Scott? You have a question?
Just in a quick calculation here, looks like we're spending about 565,000 for four buses, but we have a million. Consider buying more, like two more or?
We are hoping to be able to purchase, we're hoping to be able to purchase these eight buses. If we don't receive the grant, then that could be reduced down to seven.
Okay, I see. Okay. I'm sorry?
Can I add in on that? Would that, if I caught it right, well, it was two more diesel and two more propane. If you were going to add in more, is that about right?
We're wanting to purchase four diesel and four propane. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I believe, some of those will be 77 passengers, some will be the 39 passenger education bus.
But is the grant only for the propane?
That's correct.
So we're purchasing seven or eight buses, but there's four listed here?
Four, there's pricing for four. That pricing is for each of those individual buses.
I see. Got it.
So the combination of what we purchase will be based on the grant and what we can get for a million dollars.
Okay, my other question is, just two years ago, weren't we running like 30 more routes? Does that mean we had at that time?
Thirty more drivers?
Thirty more buses?
Right.
So where are those? I guess if we're buying, aren't we running less buses now than we were two years ago? Did we offload a bunch of buses?
Yeah.
Or are they just sitting around? Are we still replacing them?
So we have let some buses go, but we've been maintaining a fleet size so that as we have more drivers, and the hope is that we're being able to add more transportation services, that we have the buses and we're ready to go, and also maintaining an inventory of buses to support the bond projects so that as we transport students across town to other facilities while buildings are renovated and reconstructed, buses will support that as well in our initiatives and that budget.
When we do purchase new ones, we do offload buses. Yes, those are surplus to have.
Okay.
Excellent. We can offset the cost then, when we get rid of those, no?
About two grand apiece. So if you want a bus, they're really cheap.
Really?
Really.
I may need a camper.
Popular in the neighborhood. If you get one, really cheap.
Mini homes.
Of deals.
When, when you find out about the grant?
It should be awarded by the end of this month.
Okay.
It's supposed to be communicated by the end of October.
Right.
And I think you answered the only question I have, but just to confirm, there's still a need for diesel buses. Propane buses are preferred if they can do what we need them to do. Is that correct?
Right. In specific, like they're, they would be preferred within, in town, but diesel buses, once they run hotter, they run better on long trips, and so we would continue some, obviously just for that.
Is the hope that maybe propane buses will get to that point? The technology? We don't know.
Yeah.
So we'll add in availability, so as we go out and we take these trips to Kansas City, St. Louis, just the availability to be able to stop and get fuel, which is not as wide and available if you're making those types of trips down the highway, but the diesel buses, they work very well out on the highways, you can get it hot enough that they burn the strip off, and that helps with some of the emissions problem.
Thank you.
They started making electric vehicles.
What's that?
Electric vehicles. Yeah. Dr. that, do they're a lot more expensive?
Really, really expensive.
Okay.
Over 400,000.
Over 400,000?
We have another question?
Sort of on the tail of Danielle's. So I really appreciate this move towards propane. As you said, it burns cleaner, less maintenance, less fumes, less noise. You know, you can actually hear what's happening in the bus. You can hear the bird chirp for your child, but, so I appreciate all those. But as Danielle pointed out, so is there hesitation towards moving towards all propane? I heard that, you know, we want to have a diesel fleet because it would support us better. But the grant might not be there forever because they're trying to, I assume the grant's there to motivate districts to try this out because it's lower maintenance, to, you know, it'll last longer, all these benefits. Is the grant a dollar amount? You're going to get this much or not? Or if you suggested you were going to buy more, they would just give you more? Is it 15K per however many you want, or is there just a limit of four, and that's why we're going with four?
So there's a maximum of 25, and there are stipulations along with it. So as you're requesting, you also have to be able to replace a diesel bus that meets specific requirements. So I don't think that we have enough that would meet the requirements that would get us to 25, and then?
25 buses?
25 buses. It's a lottery-style grant also, so right now there's no guarantee that we're going to win it, but, you know, we're certainly hopeful. That, and because it's new technology for our maintenance staff, that's part of the idea of starting with four buses and then growing it.
So like maybe next year when you go to?
We're not overwhelming them.
So next year, when you go to buy eight or nine or seven or eight, however many, you might do more propane because you'll have more experience with it.
Yes.
We'll need more than a million dollars too, by the way.
That's in my donor.
So the grant fund is there, but the best fit for us is four at this time.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, as I process the answer to my last question, I have a follow-up question on that. So how many buses do we have sitting on reserve? If we have 108, I don't even know if that's the right math, just because we have 108 routes, I don't even know if that means we need 108 buses. How many backup buses do we have, as you say, for, potentially for a bond and potentially for going back to a two-tier system? So how many buses do we have to sit around?
We have route 155.
So I guess I'm confused. What's the urgency to buy seven or eight more if we have a bunch sitting around? And I, what's the lead time on, if we're buying these buses, how long does it take to actually get them?
Six to nine months. We will, over this now, we'll probably get them late in the spring.
Okay. I get, I don't know that there's an answer here, I'm just trying to wrap my head around why, if we have so many buses sitting there, and I get we want to be prepared for the bond, but the bond is still a maybe, it's got to get voted through.
Remember you retire buses though, as you buy, you, and like figure out trading in the car or something, you retire some.
Need to replace, need to replace old buses with new ones. We don't want these buses to be around for more than 15, 16 years. That's kind of the life expectancy of them. And so if we're not buying buses every single year, then our fleet will get too old, and then we'll start having more problems, and we'll have to, which they've done previously, where they bought 20 buses at one time in a year, and you can see what that cost would be. And so we've got a plan in place to keep that from happening, which is why we bring this each year and allocate the dollars to purchase new and then purge old.
For a nice round numbers, we completed 150. District's plan was to replace 10 every year and taking 10 old us off so that we never had buses older than 15 years out of the road. We're still trying to catch up because that plan's not been in place that long. But doing that bric-a-lily just makes it a stable budget item. And one of the things you're seeing here is where we've been able to buy a bus for a hundred thousand dollars for several years now and get 10 every year, a million dollars and no longer get 10 buses, it's now getting seven, right? So that already is putting a kink in our rotation of buses. Now, when you, when you look at the three-tier model, if we end up staying with it, and we have a reduced number of routes, then we'll adjust for 150, obviously down. Board has directed us to work towards expanding that at the end. The other thing we have to remember is you always want a percentage of extra buses because you're always going to have some buses in the shop, right? So you've got to whether it's made for routine maintenance, when they break down. So, you know, 10% minimum is what you want in extra buses. So at 108 buses, we want at least a lead of extra, and we know we're trying to really get up to 120 with our choice program. So now that gets us kind of back up to 132. So that's kind of the logic, but I think it's something we need to keep an eye on. And if we stick with the three-tier for the long term, we might miss it total fleet number. The other thing I wanted to mention, DESI has an efficiency rating for transportation performance formula, and your life of your bus, they only give credit for it through, so after that, they consider the bus termed out essentially. And so you take a hit on your efficiency rating, and so that actually impacts your efficiency.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
I think my, my only question is just the time that for our mechanics, so are they ready to go in terms of service on propane buses?
They all went to IC University in Tulsa over the summer and stayed there and took courses. We're going to repeat that again in the summer, and then there's some additional trainings that they'll extend between now and the time that you're sessioning with buses.
So they'll be ready to go with taking care of the new propane buses? Can we go on a ride? Ride the new propane buses? I want to hear this quiet bird chirping.
Denise, can I ask one more question? If you don't get the grant, it looks like the 77 passenger buses are about $9,000 more for the propane, and 39 passengers, about $7,000 more for the propane. If they're so much more efficient, if you don't get the grant, would it still make sense to buy those propane buses instead of diesel or to get four propane buses?
Yes. I would like to see us do that, but at the same time, we have to make sure that we're maintaining a large enough inventory of buses, that we're able to support whatever initiatives or whatever direction that the district goes.
So if we don't get the grant, fewer buses, but maybe better buses.
So how does that work? Does it come back to us? Like if the grant doesn't go through, do you bring it back to the board?
We already have the line item.
Right. What we're asking for approval in two weeks would be to approve the bids on these buses with the allocation of a million dollars that we have, and we won't spend more than that.
Okay. No, I just, I didn't, I'm going to re-ask her. No, I just, I didn't, I'm going to re-ask her a question. So if we don't get the grant, then what happens? Are you going to buy diesel and no propane?
So then we'll have to, we'll have to reassess. We'll have to look and see what are, what do we think that the needs of the district are going to be? We're kind of looking into the crystal ball. Do we think that it's best to go ahead and still try to buy some propane buses? Or do we need to try to buy more buses? Because if we buy propane buses, that means we're going to get less. We're not going to be able to get eight, we're going to only be able to get seven, maybe six. So...
I understand that, but does that come back to the board?
No, we're asking for approval tonight for, I mean, not tonight, on the twenty-fifth, for you to approve the purchase amount of a million dollars. So it could be...
But will we know by the twenty-fifth whether the grant's been awarded or not?
We're going to approve a million dollars.
Hopefully by the end of the month, but we will come back to, we can come back to you and say, at the end of the day, we received the grant, we're moving forward with X, Y, Z, or we did not receive the grant. So we'll put it in a weekly update that just says, we went ahead and moved forward purchasing or propane or diesel or whatever. So we'll bring the information back, but our, the request is for approval of to expend a million dollars on buses, whether they're propane or diesel.
And as I understand, we've been trying to do this every year to keep our fleet updates. We don't have a huge cost of repair and replacements.
Okay, I think you answered, so I guess what I'm hearing is the district, you decide what to buy, and we just, we don't, we can't...
There goes the chirp.
We can't contribute to that.
We'll let you know if you're going to hear the chirp or not, but...
But we can't contribute to that decision in any way, can we?
Well, you're contributing to the decision by your voting to approve the million dollars, and the information that we're saying is based on Mr. Sheldon's assessment, once we find out about the grant, then a decision will be made to move forward. So he'll go back and he'll recalculate and say, okay, we need to do this, and like I said, we'll bring it back to you via an update, just to let you know, here's where we are.
Because it sounds like you've invested man-hours into learning about propane and all this stuff. So I think I'm hearing is even if we don't get the grant, we're maybe probably going to try it.
Right, he's just saying that the numbers could possibly be adjusted, but he'll bring that information back.
Okay, thank you.
One other component I forgot to mention about the extra buses in fleet is the extra creators when we send kids out on trips, competitions, you have to have extra buses. Jonathan, what would be kind of the top number of buses you'd have out on trips?
Oh, gosh. Thursday, we're going to have seventy trips.
Seventy?
I'd say, you know, we need to have twenty, twenty-five, you know, buses that we have available to help with that.
Significant amount.
Yeah.
And there was a tie in the district contract.
Okay, excellent. So we still have a couple of weeks to send questions your way. Thank you. Thank you so much for all your information. Okay, we're going to move on to six point oh four, Community Task Force on Facilities. So at this time, are you going to introduce our presenters or...
Yes, yes, I'm not presenting. So I'm going to introduce our presenters, and I am privileged to introduce to you our co-chairs of the Community Task Force, Bridget Dirks and David Hall. And as you may recall, they also co-chaired the task force back in 2018 when this task force was first formed. They were happy to do it again this time around, and I feel like they have done a fantastic job in facilitating that. And I know we have some members of our task force that are also here, and I'm sure David and Bridget will recognize, recognize them. But I think the process went very smoothly. I think David and Bridget did a great job of being facilitators and not, what am I thinking of? They weren't directing people, they were facilitating the conversation. And through that, I feel like they came up with a great recommendation tonight. And so at this time, I'm going to have David and Bridget come on up. And I would also like to point out that our young lady who spoke earlier spent her eighteenth birthday at a task force meeting. So that's commitment, so, and we celebrated it on her, so, thank you, David.
Yes, Sophia did indeed, spent her eighteenth birthday at a task force meeting. It's great to see you all. We're really looking forward to making this presentation to you. So the Community Task Force on Facility, Facilities, as John mentioned, David and I agreed to co-chair it for a second time. We're very excited to do this important work and really enjoyed spending time with this group of people. Okay, click, sure. So this was the charge that we were presented with as a task force. We reviewed information and reviewed current SPS facilities and looked for needs. It was a great conversation, it was very meaningful, we're very glad to do it. We were providing feedback and recommendations to you all within this process. We are prioritizing high priority projects to you all, and we also asked the question, what would the community support in a potential future bond issue? So one thing that we noted, right, that was very important part of the process that we discussed when we met in July with you all was we posed the question as to whether or not we should move forward with the bond issue, and we did not just make that assumption, and that was a part of the process as well. So these are our task force members. We had thirty-four task force members, excuse me, I'm getting a little bit of a cold. We have thirty-four task force members, of which there were three school board liaisons, so thank you to the three of you for joining us. We also had two student representatives, which is what is here. We also have several task force members in the... Dan, can you in the task force? Yes. Nickup and Tyler and Becky all did a wonderful job serving on the task force as well, and you heard from Dr. Prater as well. So great group of people, they worked very hard, this was an intensive process, so we're very grateful for their time. So the process that we undertook, we held nine meetings over the course of three months. They were fairly lengthy meetings. You all got to be a part of that, so you know. We had a lot of work to do in a fairly short period of time, so we worked hard. We met, as you say, that were not school board meeting days. We really began, our first step was to tour the facilities and really get a sense of the facilities, and also to build some relationships. So we got on a bus, it was not a school bus, but we learned a lot about school buses tonight that we didn't know before. They're actually Fisk buses, and I think we all bonded in that first meeting because it was about a hundred degrees in and outside the Fisk bus, so that was a bonding experience for everyone. And then over the course of those meetings, we toured all the facilities that were considered by the original task force but not funded, and we also toured the Jarrett Construction Project, and we toured Delaware Elementary School. So those allowed us to see both results and potential projects. We covered a lot of presentations, so we really started from scratch with regard to education. We wanted to make sure that we had covered all the subject matters that we covered the last time, updated information, and then we actually had some additional information with regard to economic outlook and the growth of Springfield that we added as well. And we also had very detailed presentations on how district funding and levies and bonds and elections work, and that information was very helpful, even to those of us that felt we know, knew a lot about it. We continued to learn that process and how that all functions. So we evaluated each project as we went along. This was a really interesting and educational experience, certainly. We really dug into the projects that had not been funded in the first bond issue because they had been prioritized further down the line. Things that were notable were that construction costs have changed and increased significantly since we last discussed these projects in 2019. We had some projects on the list that were only considered for renovation because the buildings were considered high quality enough that we were only looking to potentially renovate. Others were evaluated on whether or not it made sense to renovate or build new, and generally, a lot of that, those decisions came down to cost versus quality of a potential renovation or a new building. So it's a really, really meaningful learning experience for all of us. And having been in the buildings, it was really helpful because we've been in all of the buildings as well. So next up, we worked through the process. So we've done lots and lots of learning, lots of touring, had many, many questions answered. It was a really open discussion, and each meeting we allowed for lots and lots of discussion. And then we worked through the potential projects. So what we first started with were, was a decision on whether or not there are facility improvements that need to be completed. So that was the first thing that we really asked, and there was a unanimous vote by the task force that there are pressing facility needs currently. So after we had made that agreement, and that helped us define, define our goals, we used an anonymous straw poll, pull as, straw poll as part of that process. So we would take an initial straw poll on a, on a voting item, then have a good and meaningful discussion for as long as everybody wanted to talk, and then if we needed to take a second straw poll, if people had had some changes of heart, we would do that. And then we would ask if anyone really felt that they could not come to the consensus of the group. So, and that only happened once, and we'll describe that in a little bit. So we then after that, so we went through each of the projects, we assess with when we had options, like if we wanted to maybe a new school or a renovated school, we would vote, we would discuss it, and we would make a second vote if we needed to, and then we would come to consensus, and then we would move to the next school. This was a long meeting that happened last Tuesday and the Tuesday, two Tuesdays before that too, but they were really good, meaningful conversations. So we then evaluated the projects via a multi-vote process. So we asked the participants to choose the five projects that they prioritized most significantly, and we used that information to help establish the priorities. Then we considered the debt service levy and the bond amount. So the debt service levy rate is essentially the amount of annual income that the district has to make the bond payments, and then the bond amount is sort of the total amount to be borrowed. So we made a decision about that as well. And then we asked the big question, which was, should the task force recommend the board place the issue before the voters? And ninety-five percent of the participants supported that.
All right. So I'm going to talk about the recommendations. So first of all is, I'm going to pick up kind of where she got to, where Bridget got to, as far as we're recommending to the board that you do a no tax increase extension of the debt service levy. So there was a lot of discussion about this, frankly, is you can't really lower the levy because it's already committed to it, and I think your bond council may be coming in in a couple of weeks. They were really great resources, we found them very credible in the information that we got from that. So it doesn't really make sense because it's committed to making the payments of your existing bonds, and then obviously, timing was not right either to look at increasing that. And really, in addition, is you had the first edition of the task force recommended that the second one would be a no tax increases, tax levy increase as part of that. And again, that's talking about the levy rate would not change. We are recommending the bonding of two hundred and twenty million dollars to address the most critical needs. So, you know, some may ask us, hey, before you did a hundred and sixty-eight million, why two hundred and twenty million? But the task force ultimately recommended with the, a level levy rate, we could actually go up to two hundred and forty million is what we could have done. And so we had discussion about is, do you look at going for a higher bonding or a lower, you know, lower it even below the two hundred and twenty? And whenever you look at the projects, there was just a sense is, hey, if you can get these projects done because you've got some really high priority, and you'll see it as we kind of look at about where they fall, it's probably the best place to be, and I think you guys can have some conversation, or may want to have conversation about that. But our recommendation is, we felt like is you're leaving the rate the same. So in essence, what that does is it extends of how long you're paying on the previous. It's like refinancing your mortgage at home, and then taking the cash out of it and using that to do a remodeling project, so this just extends that. So instead of it sunsetting it eighteen years, instead of it to go on for another four years beyond that. You know, the one thing is it won't do is if you opted not to place this before the voters, then it does not reduce what people's, the levy for next year. So, you know, it doesn't have any impact on that, you know, in the near-term future. And then the last thing we recommended was placing the, it before the voters in April twenty-three. This was one that we did have a dissenting opinion, when did we talk about it? Frankly, it was not that the, the discussion was not that they did not support moving it forward with an increase. There was definitely the need, and there was, you know, the projects were good, and it's going to have to ultimately go to a bond, but the only time it was, it was an objection saying is really think it ought to wait until April of 2024. There's a benefit of doing it at the April election, it saves the district money, because if you guys go to a August or a November, then you've got to split the cost of the election with any other districts or any other entities that have something on it. So April tends to make the most sense. There was question about that, again, I do want to talk about that because that was a dissenting, whereas, you know, our other decisions were all through consensus. This was the one that had an opposing opinion by, by one individual, and it was really about the need of just delaying it a year in order to allow you to get your, a study done on your strategic planning completed, as well as, you know, whether or not there needs to be any redistricting done before a decision is made on the project, on any of those that might be impacted by a redistricting. So if you looked at, okay, where are the district lines for each of those? So ultimately is, you know, kind of here's where the rubber meets the road. So we recommended a, why does it have renovation of Pipkin?
Oops.
That's a type of graphical error. So I'll get those updated as well as Pershing. So that should say Pipkin Middle School is a new middle school. Pershing is a new middle school as well, safety and security.
You're pushing the B schools. This happens sometimes with the B schools and the Bowerman visit. Anyway, Pipkin is a new and Pershing is a renovation, so the only one that's wrong on here is Pipkin.
That's right. Thank you, thank you. Yes, I am. So Pipkin is supposed to be new as part of that, and, and so that would be, we recommended new. And so with that, there was also two decisions that go with that. So, and actually, I think I get into this later, so I don't want to hit that yet. So safety and security projects were one, Pershing Middle School, Robertson, and you can see that comes to a hundred and seventy-two million, almost seventy, a hundred and seventy-three, but we also included Reed Middle School, which takes us to about two hundred and thirty-two million. So the question about that becomes is, obviously, we said only two hundred and twenty million dollars. So you're going to have to come up with some ways, and we'll kind of show you some things that for the board to consider. Because ultimately is, the task force is to bring you projects, and then you guys will have to make decisions that's going to make adjustments to that. So safety and security projects, I want to talk about those. So we've got four different things we want to talk about specifically. So it includes storm shelters, gymnasiums for certain school, and what that does is it provides a rated facility that also serves other purposes as part of it. So it's not just a vacant structure that gets added on, that gets used during the event of a tornado or severe weather, it gets used for other things during the school. And I think if you see those facilities and how they're using the cafagematoriums, you'll see how that has an impact. We talked about technology upgrades, and there was some technology upgrades that did not make it in here, but some of the things we found is important is door access, obviously. If you read reports from previous incidents that occurred in other districts, there's a good reason for having door access or alarms to let you know whenever there's, doors are open or closed. Roof access, and we had discussion about this, actually a lot of discussion about it, and it really is related to property crime. It's not, less of directly for a personal safety, it's more towards a property crime of them, school systems getting broken into and typically vandalize that kind of thing. So a lot of discussion, Chief Williams was able to weigh in on that well as part of that. And then security camera additions, again, having good coverage in the places that you need those to be able to prevent things from occurring or identify them quickly. Another one that generated a lot of discussion is protective glass film on first-floor windows. So we included two and a half million dollars to go towards that. Part of that was, I mean, what the concept of that is, you can put in your secure vestibules, and so they've got this protective film so that it's not bulletproof glass, but in essence, what it does, it slows an intruder down. They're hard to get through. I know Chief Farrell has gone through and has done some work on this. Obviously, I'm familiar with it, having looked at it before as well for our campus, but it slows people down. Well, that works fine, you've got your secure vestibules, but now you've got all of these others that don't have any protection, so it's really very easy to get into a So it's really very easy to get into a school that way. What this really does, it takes that first floor and makes it a much more secure to where that you have, you're going to get buzzed in, or it's going to take you a significant amount of time in order to get in. So that's the reason that we ultimately opted, that we felt that should be included in this. And then some improved playground fencing. Again, the risk is if you don't have good playground fencing in areas, then it makes it easier for bad things to happen for whether it's a child wandering off or whether it is somebody with bad intentions. We did not recommend for bond funding gunshot detection system. And it's not that we were opposed to that system. It's just felt like is, that's probably something that's not going to have the lifespan of what the bond issue does. So does it really make sense to buy a car if you refinance your house? Generally not. And that's kind of what we're looking at with this. And then also the dispatch facility upgrades for emergency operations center. There was a lot of discussion about this. And ultimately is, I think there was some questions that as it was talked about is, maybe it can be re-looked at that to see is, are there other options available before you move forward to this? It's not that everybody, I think, supported it. The question was is how that gets done. And so instead, we decided to leave it off of this recommendation. So we provided two recommendations for Pipkin Middle School, which if the board is able to procure land within the service area that allows for a larger campus, our recommendation is that you have new construction at that location. Okay? So that's the first thing. We don't know whether or not you're able to. We just know is the current location is probably too small for what we're trying to service with that building. And so we would recommend is exploring that to see if there is other available property in that area where it will work for the school district, and then you build new instead. Now, one of the, you know, obviously, you know, we talk about a lot of things. One of the comments that comes up is, you know, we love the building, you know, Pipkin as well as Reed are both beautiful structures. And so there's probably the board, this is not a task force deal, but probably the board wants to consider is, when they visit with the architects, how do they ensure that they maintain some of that character with a new structure and really be able to honor some of that without losing some? So the kind of that balance. But frankly is renovating them if you go over there and tour those. And I know that you guys have seen these. You just see the number of stairs and how inefficient it is or ineffective it is from accessibility as well as many other challenges with the buildings. If the board is not able to procure land, because again, we don't know if you will or not, but if you are, then our alternate recommendation would be that you do new construction on the existing site rather than renovation again. So either way, it's, the building is just not really, it's going to take heavy renovation and still you're going to have one that probably 20 years from now or 30 years from now, school boards can say, why did they do that? Because you've still got a 100-year-old building and at that point, 125-year-old building. So that was our recommendation regarding it, our two recommendations. Pershing, we also had two recommendations. So we looked at it, and ultimately is, before you guys decide on this, you need to consider is, is it a K-8 school? Continue to be that? Or is it become a middle school only? Because then you can decide of what do you actually, what do you do with that building? And in either case, we recommended renovation as part of it either way. But we know that there is a smaller group of students that are the K through five that go to school there. And there are also other schools that are nearby that there might be some advantages if you guys decided to is move them there and make that a middle school only so you don't have the smaller children with the others. And you may look at that and say is, nope, that really doesn't fit within the programming of what you guys are looking for. So we want to give you both options because we don't know which way that it is that you guys are considering doing that. If it's a middle school only, we also included the cost of funding for additional rooms in two of the nearby elementaries. Because if they're going to pick up some additional students, then they're going to need a little bit of additional space to go with it. So we included that as part of the cost because that's it. Still, the overall cost is about $5 million less than if it is a K-8 school. Because again, it just takes less renovation in order to do that than if you're doing it as well. So, and that includes that renovation cost or the addition at the other two schools.
Can you just go back to that slide? Because I didn't catch.
Yes, you may.
We know, just one sec. Sorry.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So the next one we had that we wanted to specifically talk about is Robertson Community School and Reed Middle School. So Robertson Community School had one more vote when we did our multi-voting over Reed Middle School. So they were very close in the number of votes whenever we did the prioritization. So whenever you looked at that, one had 15 and the other had 60. So they were very close on it. The recommended bond amount is about $12 million short for both projects unless you end up with construction costs coming in. So you're not going to have enough money to do all of each of, all of those projects unless construction costs come in better than what we anticipate that they will. Or we were bought bond conditions, it ends up in additional funds, so you end up better because of that. The scope of the projects are reduced. So for example, is if Pershing was scaled back some, or if, you know, well, really if any of them, if the security project, so maybe you left off one or two of the shelters, then that would save some funding. So there's different ways that you may be able to do that, that you guys could consider. Part of the concern that was really raised, so this was, you know, one of the, one of the things that we saw was about the future enrollment at Robertson. You know, we saw where that it had decreased. Now, it's, it's come back up some. There isn't optimal size for schooling. So part of it is, is, you know, what's really going to happen as you guys look at Robertson? And, you know, if you end up, you know, doing anything to where you look at the boundaries, then it may end up with more students or, you know, it may end up with less. So I think that's something you have to consider. So we certainly want to, you know, raise that to you, that that's something for you guys to consider. So project design, so we had some themes that we wanted to talk about as well. So one thing is after the 2017 failed vote, the voters indicated they've gotten greater clarity on the projects. So here's what we're, a recommendation that we've come to you with as well for you to consider. So because of that, in 2018, design work was already in process and or completed on many of the Phase One projects. So it allowed them to be bid immediately as soon as the election was passed. It also gave the voters to be able to see what they were looking at on many of those projects. So it was able to have a dual benefit of that. So the task force is recommending to the board that you allocate funds to go ahead and do the design work for Phase Two projects. So, you know, that may be one or more of those in order to look one or even all the way up to all of them. It allows them to better understand what's on the ballot as well as it allows you to, as soon as, you know, if it did go to a vote and it is successful, then you would be able to immediately get started on that. And then the elections. So the task force recommends the board place the issue on the ballot of 2023, as we talked about. Again, I already talked about the dissenting opinion and the kind of the logic or the reason why there was just a dissenting opinion on waiting until 2024 rather than doing it in 2023. Since there's a board elections in April, no additional cost, I talked about that. We talked about taxes will not be reduced if it's not placed on the ballot. The current bonds will pay off in about 18 years, and a vote will extend the current debt service levy by an additional four years, what we would expect. And I do want to say, and, you know, you guys may or may not be familiar with this, the original task force recommended an 18-cent levy increase. And so that was put into place. And there was, because of another decision, it ended up rolling back by 17 cents. So in essence is, we're, right now, the debt service levy is actually one cent above what it was prior to the last task force even convening. So, and we certainly think that that, you know, is important to understand as we look at keeping taxes low. The debt ser-, oh, I guess I had a slide point on it, didn't I? I forgot. So anyway, that gives you what I just said. So we had four themes. So these, so we tried to stick to our assignment, which was about what are the projects related to you guys and should you move forward with a bond issue or not? But we also had four themes that are really beyond kind of our scope that we do want to raise. So it's something for you guys to decide. We don't make a recommendation on this where it just simply is, hey, here's something we noticed. First of all is how the board is connected to the design process. So how is it that, you know, whenever you get into, it's one of the building is, there's different ways to do that. That's up to you guys to decide and what it is. We don't look at designs. We just try to look at scale and scope and then say is, what are the most pressing needs? And then how do you move forward with that? It's really up to you guys. So, you know, we don't know what the design is going to look like really until it gets built is when we're seeing that. Second thing is, ensure projects are right-sized without unnecessary expenses. You know, we've got beautiful buildings and we want to build functional buildings that are going to last us for a long time in the future. But certainly, we want to make sure that there's no perceptions that are out there that there was unnecessary expenses as we, you know, as the board looks at actually designing the projects. The third theme we had is projects could be impacted by redistricting. So you really should consider whether redistricting should occur, that might, if it's going to occur, that might impact a project, you would not want to move that project until you've made a decision on that. So, you know, so again, if any of the redistricting, you want to decide on it before we actually, before you actually moved a project forward. And then the last thing is, some of the safety and security projects were not permitted. We already talked about this. But you may want to consider those with other funding sources to do those. Because we didn't, it's not that we didn't feel they weren't valuable, but they really is, that's something for you guys to decide because it wasn't, didn't fit into our niche, so to speak. So.
All right. Some final thoughts. So we had unanimous recognition from the task force members that there are needs for facility improvements. So we're, we know that these needs are very important. We looked at and spent time in hundred, more than 100-year-old buildings. Pipkin, Reed, and Robertson that are on the list, they're all over 100 years old. These are the ones that we suggest to you all that you consider constructing new. They have significant issues due to their age. Pershing is over 60 years old, but the task force felt that the cost difference between new and renovated renovation was significant enough that renovation made more sense. As was the case in 2018, there are new technologies out there for safety and security. And so being able to support those, our safety options are really, really important. And then a universal theme that we saw over and over again is that access to the buildings, ADA compliance, elevators, stairs, functional bathrooms, these are all things that we saw over and over again in these very old buildings. And some of those basic functionalities could really improve the quality of the space for the students and the teachers that are in those buildings. So the current economic environment was considered, as David said before, there's not going to be a reduction of the debt service levy if you all don't move forward with the bond issue. So it, that is going to stay the same no matter what. We also had some discussions about, we sort of defined, someone defined it as sort of like maxing out the credit card. What is maxing out the credit card? And even with a $220 million bond issue, there are, there's still $150 million in debt service capacity remaining. So it does not at all max out the debt capacity. We also know that construction costs are going to continue to rise more than likely, hopefully at a slower rate, but we certainly don't anticipate it to drop. And so as a result, it's important to go ahead and take action on this sooner rather than later. And then, as I said, there was one dissenting opinion on moving forward in April of 2023. So those are kind of our final thoughts. We are ready to receive any questions that you all have.
Okay. So before we start, I'm going to just ask our board members that you address your questions and we'll kind of go around the table to David and Bridget and then let them respond. And then we'll go to the next. And if we need to go around a couple of times, we'll do that until we get our questions answered. So we'll start wherever, whoever wants to jump in and keep going. And just quickly, I will thank the three of you that spent the hours and hours on our board serving as liaisons. I got to do that the first time around, and I know it was tremendous amount of time, but wow, it was very valuable and meaningful. So I think, thank the three of you that did that, so.
We have had every Tuesday, busy with SPS stuff since July 19. Every Tuesday.
A lot of time, but hopefully some great relationships were built with community and board members.
A great bonding, no pun.
Great bonding. That's a good shot. So I mean, I'm going to let someone volunteer or I may pick someone, so. That's the teacher in me coming.
Well, I'll just start by saying I participated in every single meeting, and it was a pleasure to learn and sit from learning how you guys manage the group and direct the conversation. I appreciate every single person who participated in those meetings. It was a lot of effort and time commitment. So I just want to thank all of the participants. I was especially thrilled and impressed by our student representatives. We had two of them who were very faithful to coming to those meetings and not just coming, but participating and offering insights, questions, and lots of other inputs. I want to thank them for that, particularly Sophia. I'm so impressed with her. But I am just really thrilled with the outcome and the way that you guys handled and put together this particular presentation for the board. And I will sit back and let those who have more questions, because I spent a lot of time already engaging in a lot of these questions and answers.
So I just want to say, do, reiterate what Sharita said. Great, great work by you guys. It's efficient process with meaningful discussion where everybody was very respectful to each other and worked well together. I think a lot of that did happen to be because of the bonding upfront and how you brought people together. And there was a lot of work in the amount of, short amount of time, like you said earlier, but it's came together well thanks to your leadership. So thank you all for that. I do have a few questions, but I don't think it's for you more than it is for the staff and what the next steps are.
Go ahead. Any questions? Yeah?
For the staff as well? I'm looking to see.
We didn't specifically point out, but we had an incredible amount of help from SPS staff. Dr. Mulfer, Dr. Dott, and Shannon Alls really, really helped us so many times and helped educate us on so many important components of it.
So Travis and John are here, and they were the informational resources when needed. So sure, go ahead, Scott.
I just wanted to talk about what the next steps are in the timeline. And I don't know if this is for this discussion or for another one.
Might as well. Start now.
What are the next steps as far as putting together a schedule and a timeline?
Let me also recognize Kara, who although we didn't make her come to meetings, she provided a lot of the information behind the scenes. And we appreciate, appreciate Kara.
And she did your slides for you?
So she did. I mean, I hope that she said it was clear to point that out because there was a clear difference between the first ones and the second one. But anyhow, so kind of the process, if we follow what occurred before, is tonight is kind of the opportunity for you to really dialogue with the co-chairs around the task force, that process, how we got to the recommendation, any questions you have there. At the next board meeting, 25th, that is where you really dialogue with each other and have conversation around the proposal, whether or not to proceed exactly like it is, to make some shifts like David referenced, and kind of have that, that kind of discussion. Then from there, we would bring to the board, if the board gives us the nod to bring back ballot language or approval, then we would bring that language back to the board either November or December and for the board to consider and then approve. It has to be, I think the deadline for submission at the county clerk's office is January 24th. So we have to have it there by then at the latest, which we don't want to wait till that day. So, you know, December approval would be preferred. Early January approval could occur if that's what it takes, but would not be desired. So that's kind of it. There's obviously some.
There's obviously some things the board needs to work through around discussion and weighing out some of those four points that David and Bridgette pointed out because that'll factor into however we proceed.
Great. Thank you. And then building on that too, I just have one, of course, I'm glad you brought up some of the lessons learned from the last two bond issues. So is there going to be, and maybe it's already started, Steven already started developing a communication plan for this whole process. Has that started and when will that be complete for us to review?
So the good news is that during 2019 bond proposal, we did have a very robust information campaign. So there's a good template that's in place. We have messaging that can be ready to go very quickly depending on the details of the board's decision. Yes, we have a great plan that is in place and a great team that's ready to go. And our commitment is that after the board's expansion, if this is approved, we will be ready to engage with the community so that everyone is aware of what we're saying.
Great.
Along those lines, I want to emphasize that as a public entity, we cannot promote or oppose any valid issue, right? We can only provide factual information. So Steven and his crew, that's what they will do is they will just provide factual information about the proposed bond issue, what it entails, those kinds of things.
I don't want to speak for David, but you know, we're happy to help continue on the education trail here. So we helped with that in 2018 and 19. We even had to do a Facebook Live one time. So we are happy to continue to help provide that education.
But we can't promote it, okay? The school district is a public entity.
But it's a board.
But as Tom Prater mentioned, there can be a group.
That's right.
Outside people.
Individually, you can promote or oppose any valid measure you want, and there can be a group that organizes that is not a part of the district.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And the last time there was a step, G and T, the S on S group, we never done that.
Okay. All ahead.
Okay, thank you. So next questions?
If I could just comment, from the very beginning, the onset of this, I do want to thank Kelly for interjecting on how it is that we felt that maybe we might have a little bit more balanced of the task force. And to be quite honest with you, we had some rather contentious conversations. And I thank both of you for working towards trying to appease or bring what many of us thought that we could kind of centralize things rather than being on one side or another. And, and because of that effort that you two made, I do think that it brought more to the table. We had some really great in-depth conversations and concepts and ideas. And to me, I think that really made this task force even stronger, even though that I wasn't on the original task force. Now with that said though, both of you, as Sharita had indicated earlier, on how it is that you just kept bringing everybody back to the table on what your focus was as a task force, which was very meaningful because of the fact that, you know, you'll get these emotions in, you get all of these discussions going off and all of these trails and everything and you just kind of bring everything back. And I make note of that because you both came back from the first task force, all right? Losing that perspective or that experience or that background, as Dr. Prater had alluded to somewhat earlier, we don't know that we would even be here tonight with this presentation because of that. And so I commend both of you very much. And men, Dr. Mulford and Shannon and Dr. Shaw, I mean, just, they just worked their tails off day in and day out. And thank you, Dr. Shaw, for putting the PowerPoint presentations together.
Oh, John.
Can get arrows.
You just have to have a little laugh. Anyway, in conclusion, bravo, zulu, good job. That's what we say in the neighborhood. Be much better. I'm very proud of you both. Thank you so very much. And the staff that supported them, thank you very much.
Yeah, I want to make a couple of comments because I think you made a couple of good points. Obviously, whenever we met with you in June, there was a lot of differences of thoughts about a lot of things related to task force. I think that, you know, first of all, is the process we used this time was virtually identical to the one that we used last time. So whenever the report was written, it was really, I was just replugging in because we use the same methodology to do that. And I would say is, I would agree, I think it was a better process even this time as much as we enjoyed the first one because we did have greater differences of opinions. We actually like that because you end up with better results whenever you do. And it all comes down to is that common understanding of everyone feeling like they've got the ability to share their honest opinions, the agreements and disagreements with that, and it's not just automatically dismissed. And, you know, we, like I say, we asked the question specifically is, you know, are there needs? We asked specifically is should we recommend a bond issue to the board or not? That was raised during this, you know, the last time that we visited with the board. And, you know, the ultimately is we were okay with whatever it ended up with, you know? So that's why it makes it easy to facilitate whenever you feel like you don't really have a dog in the fight, so to speak, because it's really, it's up to us, whatever comes out of that. So I think it was a great process and, you know, I don't really know where you're going to end up, but the good thing is we knew we'd end up somewhere.
I think we really enjoyed consensus building.
Yeah, it is, it's fun.
Great, thank you. So Kelly, are you ready?
Yeah, you sure you are?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I've been writing down a bunch of notes.
We have all night.
So, so thank you very much for putting in so much time to do this. I know I was critical of the process to start, but that's no reflection on people involved and the time input and the extent that everyone truly cares for students in this district. So thank you for everything that you did. And thank you to the other three board members that served as liaisons. I appreciate very much doing that. It was important that we had people involved in that process. It was important for me to not be one of those people just because I was so vocal of the process to begin with. And I didn't want, I wanted to be clear that I wasn't vocal of the process in an effort to be controlling over the process. I just wanted the process to be pure. And I thought if, if I quickly volunteered to be a liaison, then I might be getting too involved in that process. And I, I'm glad it happened the way it did so that it could happen in a pure manner and then come back to us. So thank you for your time and everyone else that served on the task force and staff as well. So I do have a lot of, it's not really questions to you to, maybe there's a few in here, but just kicking off the conversation with us as a board, and I know we're going to have the opportunity to discuss more in a couple of weeks, but I wanted to kind of touch on some items that I think hopefully we can all be thinking about to be prepared for further discussions. Because we've got obviously big decisions to make here really quickly. And to me, I see that there's needs very much in, in our facilities in the district. But again, I want to focus on the process because if we, we make mistakes along the way and we're not 100% responsible along the way, or we, I don't know, let our guard down, then you may be putting off some of those needs to a later date or who knows when that we could do now. So for example, we have, was it three or four proj, we have four projects recommended?
Five.
Five? Well, including the safety. Okay, so we have five, five projects recommended, which was a total of 230 something million and only 220 million recommended to actually bond for. Furthermore, it's my understanding that if we do a $220 million bond, that leaves us the ability, where we stand currently under our appraised value to bond for 150 more. So think of it that way, like if some, what's in the reserve? There's only, we're spending 220 and we're only leaving 150 behind. And we have a long list, it seems, that goes beyond what was presented here of other things that we need to address in the near future. So to me, there's a sense of urgency that, that every dollar we do spend, whether it's 220 million or any other number, that it's just, that we get the process right and it's as responsible as possible. Because if we mess it up along the way, then we're not serving as many students as we So we have some questions to figure out, a lot of like what, what you had talked about were recommendations around Robertson and Reed and things we can do to maybe get Reed plugged into that, this, this phase two versus later. Sorry, I got a bunch of things here. So, so I have some requests that as a board that we start addressing, and I don't know how they take form, I guess requests to staff ultimately if we decide that that's something we want to do. But in an effort to make sure that we're responsible with all of this, there's some things that were not part of the task force's responsibility to us and it's going to be our job to figure out. And some of the questions I have is I want, I would like to know more about the process itself, particularly the design process. Can you pull up, you had a slide on there about things, several of the things we need to be discussing, I believe, are on that slide. So that first one, board, board connection to the facility design process. I think as a board, we should probably understand a little bit better what exactly that, that process is in terms of selecting architects and how we actually decide the scope of projects and the bidding process. I personally would like a presentation on that. I think there might be an opportunity there where it's possible that other, other boards in similar situations have taken maybe a heavier handed approach, there's kind of a gray scale here of being more involved in the process or less involved in the process. And I think it's important when we're spending this much money, it's ultimately our responsibility. And a lot of that comes down to that part right there, the board connection to the facility design process. And I think we, we as a board need to engage in that process. And I don't know if that means there's several board reps or liaisons that sit in on meetings that would take place, maybe between Dr. Mulford, Dr. Lathan and the design team, if we want to do it that way, or maybe we decide that we're not the experts in that and maybe we want to hire an expert who can sit in our behalf. I'm not necessarily suggesting like a construction owner's rep, even though that's something we could consider as well. But definitely during the design process, I think we really need to know what's happening there. And I think maybe there was some, you know, we've just come off of a bond and a lot of projects and as well as we may have think it has gone, there's always learning experiences and we should learn from those and apply them. And this may be one of them that we can, as a board, have a little bit better of an understanding through the design and the bidding process. And that would affect that next bullet point that says ensure projects are right sized without unnecessary expenses. So, so for example, one of the things in touring, I was able to tour Pershing yesterday, well, all of these schools that are on this list, the four of them, yesterday. And one of the things that was not the task force's responsibility for Pershing was to determine scope. I mean, they were kind of given a binary option is my, and correct me if I'm wrong. We were kind of given a binary option, which is basically remodel or rebuild new. But there's a lot of things that I think we're going to need to absorb a lot of information from staff to make some important decisions. Definitely should that, should that elementary school exist there? It's one of the smallest ones we have in the district. And it's also to my understanding that something like two thirds of that student population actually transfers in, they don't reside within the boundaries of that school. Additionally, some of the needs at Pershing might be a little bit more, a bit more of a scalpel, scalpel approach instead of a, I don't know what the term is, but.
Transport?
In my personal opinion, which, Pershing doesn't seem to be a full remodel need. And why that's important is if we're able to get by with a little bit less on Pershing, then that might be the difference between us getting Robertson and Reed done and affecting more kids in the district. Instead of just saying, okay, let's just remodel the whole thing. So that's another thing that I think we really need to ask a lot of questions about and maybe direct staff to provide a, an option C. What would a scaled back renovation be? What are the real needs there? A lot of the needs there, to my understanding, were more cafeteria, gym, you've got the elementary kind of off on one side that may or may not need to be there. So there's a lot of things kind of around the perimeter of that building that we could potentially scale back that, which would make available some funds for some other projects that are needed as well. And then the redistricting is really important. And I don't know how long this is going to take, and Dr. Mulford, maybe you can speak to this, but to me, some of the decisions that we're making here should be heavily impacted by that redistricting discussion. It's kind of, it doesn't make sense for me, it doesn't make sense to me for us to spend tens of millions of dollars on certain buildings and then within a year later, go through redistricting and then sort of figure out the redistricting behind actually spending the money. It seems to be a process that need, we have an opportunity here to do those things simultaneously and it seems to be the most responsible way to do so, to make sure that all of our facilities are as efficient as possible to, to, again, it comes down to affecting as many students So I guess to sum that up is just, I don't know, I guess a plea for a broader discussion for us to really dive into these things and take seriously the $220 million that we're spending and sort of make a request to staff to provide some guidance on how we approach some of those things. And then other than that, I guess I would look forward to having a more detailed conversation next week. And then also is that one Stifel is going to be, someone from Stifel is going to be presenting?
That's correct. So Brent Levens with Stiefel, I think it's, Stifel, Stiefel, I think it's Stiefel, will be here on the 25th and he will talk about bonding side of it and some of those other details around it.
And I'm, I'm certainly going to have a lot of questions then too, because I think when we're borrowing $220 million, it's important to know every detail of that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kelly. But here's what I'm taking is that Kelly has, has kind of given back, you know, he's come back with some of the questions you brought forward to, some of those, not my time to speak yet, but.
No, it's okay.
I'm saying this, I think he has said the same thing, Pershing, what he said about Pershing. So what are we going to do with it?
So, so let me make a couple of comments towards what you said is if you look at the task, whenever you look at the final report, we didn't include it for tonight, but when you look at the list and the prioritization, there was the ones we recommended and there was Bingham School that were all in that upper tier and then everything else was in a lower tier. So I think that's one thing that you can look at as you go to do. And I think the other thing is, I, I told Bridgette after, since we got done with our last meeting where we did the prioritization, I wish we'd done another vote on the projects we moved forward because I'm not sure that Robertson would have, it was so close, they were only off by one vote, that it would have not changed on that. And so I think that is one thing is if you look at, and that's one reason we made the note about redistricting is you're probably not going to be having much impact on redistricting of the middle schools. They're not going to be impacted. It's really redistricting impacts the elementary schools. So that's why in some ways, I think if we'd had that discussion, we probably, it wouldn't have surprised me if we'd seen the difference. Ultimately, as we make a recommendation to you guys, with, it's your decision on what you want, what projects you want to do, and we talked about the scale and scope, you know, it really, that's what came to us and we just said new versus renovation. So that is something that you guys should be looking at as you look to move this forward. So, you know, I think the task force, we certainly recognize that and, and understand. Now, if you went down and picked up one that was at the bottom of that list that only had two votes or three votes and moved it up, I think we'd be scratching our head. But, you know, if you take any of those up ones, I think they're all going to make sense.
Yeah, there was a fairly defined line beneath Bingham. So it was fairly clear that the task force felt those were potential third phase projects and were thus. and were thus lowly prioritizing them, and the other ones were higher. So, it's certainly within the scope, and we saw this in the first phase, where if you all have this discussion, and it's meaningful, and you are not ready to make a decision about Robertson and the actual attendance of that school, then you can prioritize the middle schools that we've recommended, which are all meaningful projects and are less impacted by any redistricting.
And Bingham was still very close to that list.
It was a remodel.
Yeah, it was a remodel, and the student numbers at, as far as impacting a large number of students, the numbers at Bingham are high, and so there's an opportunity there also to consider that renovation at Bingham, if for some reason we decided to hold off on Robertson.
Yes.
So, I'm going to go back to what Kelly's points, I think he's given us some good homework for Travis and John on those questions of looking in a little bit more to the options of Pershing. And, you know, if that stays K-8, or goes middle school, or, you know, there's some, just some of the things that he brought up, and then having that discussion. So, I think additional information, I mean, that thinks that's.
Yeah, to clarify, I think the things are, I personally would like to see an option C on Pershing in terms of scope. Sort of a timeline and an understanding of what we need to do to consider redistricting, and how we can potentially fold this into the process. Then I would also like to see some sort of presentation of a better understanding of the process from the design process and the bidding process, and how we're selecting those people, and how we're working through that process. And.
Couple things, just kind of on that. Okay, so, option three, let's say a Pershing renovation, that's not a quick turnaround, right? So, that's a, if the board wants us to dive into that, that's going to really take some time.
Yes.
And really, we're kind of spinning our wheels, if we're going to have conversation around it becoming a true middle school versus a K-8, you really got to kind of land that decision before we do too much around a third option. So, that's probably a conversation that needs to be part of the 25th. And if we're going to explore going to middle school, we probably need to engage community, get some feedback, bring that feedback back to the board. Being a renovation, regardless, we know it's renovation, I think we do have a little bit of time there, to engage the community around what they want it to be, then let the board digest that information, and make some firm decisions. So, I don't think that has to be decided in November, right? So, if we made that decision by the end of January, by the first part of February, so that people can be informed, this is what will happen if the bond issue passes, then I think we would be in good shape. So, kind of that's that part. And then as far as what the process looks like as far as design, I think we can present on what the process has been, but then really, the board, if the board doesn't want that process, that's where you all have to have some discussion with Dr. Lathan to direct us on what that process needs to be.
Yeah, and I would like to clarify, though, that I understand that some of this takes time, but just me personally, with my one vote, I'm just not willing to have my vote be a blank check on 229 dollars. There's just, I just want, before I'm able to get on board with that, there's just some of these things I'm going to need to understand a little bit better, to have a little bit, a little bit better feeling about what our plan is to spend the money. And I know it's going to take some, I know some of that's going to take some time, and maybe we don't get there on just one vote.
Kelly, would I say?
Sure, absolutely. Oh, yeah, and I mean, I guess my question is, just to Kelly, would you need more time one-on-one with Travis, John?
I think it speaks to the, so the past task force and the past bond issue is a good example of how, while we, so we brought to the voters a fairly clear sense of the schools that we were prioritizing within that bond issue. There were efficiencies gained over the course of the effort. In that first phase, we had recommended the first half of a two-part construction project at Hillcrest, that was a fairly expensive project, but because of the work, sort of efficiencies that were gained, conditions of the levy, of the bonds, all that, we were able to get second half of Hillcrest in there. Then, more time passed, there were additional efficiencies, there were, we moved on to York, right? I get, we moved on to York, so York was able to be brought from the second phase into the first phase, and a little more time passed. Then there was a little bit of funding left, and we began on the gym slash shelter projects, and so both of those made it into it. So, all that to say, what we brought to the voters was a good sense of what we thought would happen, and so what you, you know, you are potentially bringing to the voters is a good sense of Pershing. But if you are able to gain efficiencies in the process, and it is a less costly endeavor, you do have a fairly clear recommendation from the task force, that your next priority, were to bring another one in, would be Bingham, because that one also had a high vote. So, you're bringing, you're bringing to the voters as clear as possible the answer that we have, knowing that conditions potentially change. So, you can't, you know, we don't have a crystal ball with regard to every piece of this project, because we're just doing scope at this point with regard to budget. But there's certainly precedence here from the first bond issue, that suggests that you all can find efficiencies and fund as many things as possible.
Okay, Scott, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Kelly, I understand what you're saying, and I think we're looking at, you may, we may want to do this, the best way to do this is to, like we do with the budget. You know, we'd be with CARA, there's a couple of us who meet with CARA, you know, and go through it line by line, and then go through it in detail, to understand the process, understand what the budget is, and the scopes of the budget, the scope of the budget. I think we're looking for something like that on this, or am I wrong?
No, honestly, I think it's something a little bit different, because this isn't just, I'm not looking for staff just to say, just help me fill in the gaps. I'm looking for us as a board to take a little bit of a role in us all understanding that process, and then having a discussion if any, if any changes need to be made.
Right, and I'd say, understand the process by meeting with them, you know, in those smaller groups, and then come back as a collective group and talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say that we did, as a task force, have a presentation, I think, that answered a lot of those kinds of questions, that was, provided a lot of insight on that process piece, that perhaps you can get from someone, because it did, I feel, answer a lot of those process questions, a lot of things that you seemed to be asking, maybe answered in that presentation. I think John gave that presentation. It was Travis? It was Travis?
Yes, Travis, and it was very helpful.
It was very helpful.
Okay, I'm going to quickly move to Danielle, because she hasn't had a chance to say anything yet.
I would like to see that presentation at some point, to understand the process a little bit better, and where we're going with this. It's been said multiple times, but I'm going to say it again, because it's important. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You volunteered your time again to this process, and also, thank you to everybody who served on the task force team. You're all volunteers, and we appreciate that. And also, thank you yesterday for taking Miriam and Kelly and I to those schools, because it's one thing to see it on paper, and it's entirely different to see it in person, and it's amazing what the staff at those schools are doing to make things work, but it also isn't fair to them. Pipkin in particular, I think I told you, I felt like I was in a funhouse with stairs going every which ways, every which way. And it's also not fair to some of our students who don't have the opportunity to go to the ID program there because of accessibility limitations in that school, and that just stood out to me so much. In addition to the flooding in some of the bathrooms in these schools, or in some of the classrooms, and the amazing custodian who brings lunch tables in, and then gets them moved out and put away within six minutes, so that a class can be held in that location. So, it was just really eye-opening to see that in person, because we weren't part of the task force, but thank you to our board members who did service liaisons for that. I don't have any questions, I think all my questions were answered yesterday during the tour of those facilities, except also just comment on what Kelly says as far as moving forward, what that looks like. At what point do we have to decide, like, the K-8 or middle school for Pershing? When do we get to ask those questions and get feedback from our community members and educators in that, in that building?
John, are you ready to respond to that part for a bit? Move what next steps? I know on October 25th, we're going to have the discussion of our bonding.
Yeah. Obviously, the sooner we can make decisions, the better, but we do have to recognize that there's some things that it's going to take a little bit of time. I do think that most of those items can be decided upon prior to having approved language, right?
Yes.
But the one thing I don't think we can completely land is the scope of the Pershing renovation. And as you know probably as well as anybody, Kelly, once you get into a renovation, there's always going to be things that you thought you would have to do, that you ended up having to do, right? But I think the key with Pershing, and this is probably what you're getting at, is let's determine the musts, this is what has to be done, that we know will be part of the project. And then, as we get into that project, we can assess other needs as they come up. Very similar, Travis, to kind of what happened at Hillcrest, right? So, we had some set things, and Travis, we jumped in, we had four up here. But, we had some set things, but then as we got into the project, there were some other things that emerged, that we had to pivot and account for. So, I fully anticipate that'll be the case at Pershing. But I think we could definitely, we can definitely get in there and assess it prior to, I know for sure probably by January, we can identify the musts that kind of go there. Could possibly be done earlier. A lot of that's really, you know, we, it's all a sequence, right? So, we don't want to select an architect until we know we're proceeding with the bond issue.
Right.
And so, we need to select an architect, or a construction manager, or whatever model we go with, to kind of help us assess what needs to be done in the building. So, all of those things kind of depend upon each other.
But we did, sorry.
Sorry, just to clarify, so prior to voting on the language, we can at least decide if Pershing should be a K-8 or a middle school?
Yeah, we would need to do that, because our bond language would need to reflect that.
And we would, of course, have a discussion about possibly rearranging the priorities on the list?
Yes, I would say that needs to happen in the meeting.
If your priority is Reed, and you want to hold off on Robertson, that's a discussion that you need to have on the 25th.
Okay.
And certainly, the task force supports that, because it was a very, very close vote, so those decisions are very much up to you all.
And do you, does, should the redistricting discussion play into the decision on whether or not Pershing should be a K-8 or a middle school?
I don't know if the elementary boundaries, that's what, when we talk about redistricting, that's what we're talking about, elementary boundaries. I don't know if that necessarily will impact the Pershing side of it. I think it definitely impacts Robertson in the discussion.
So, that's a, Robertson, as I understand it, was, is 160-something students?
Probably 170 this year.
And we're proposing building a school for 350?
Probably 300, whatever that does.
So, to me, that's a big one. We, we really need to be figuring out the districting, the district boundaries, before we say we're going to take a school that has 160 kids, spend $31 million on it, that we could spend on another school and rebuild it twice as big.
And I think administratively, we would all agree with that. Like, you don't want to build something until you know what the population in that building is.
And I, and I don't think that, you know, the report reflects that, I think the committee understands that there are some things that we can adjust in the recommendation that still fit within the ideas of what the task force came up with. It doesn't have to be exactly those five things that we talked about, there's a lot of movement that's, that is, that we can do based on what the task force found.
I would agree with that. So, if, let's say on the 24th, 25th, sorry, on the 25th, if the board says, look, we don't want to make any decisions around elementary facilities until we do a boundary study, demographic study, make decisions around our elementary boundaries, so let's flip Reed and Robertson, and let's hold on Robertson until we get that report, and we're probably talking about a year-long process. So, if we started right away, we're probably going to have that information next December, next January, making decisions for the following year. So, I think that would flow well to the timeline, and I think the task force would understand that rationale.
Then we also have to remember that we have the, we have a plan for a third phase, so there's still an opportunity to get done the things that need to get done, just with a slightly different timeline. Also, I just wanted to mention that those concept design that was recommended, that also won't go into play with regards to how we look at scoping also, right? When we, if the board decides to spend the money to do those conceptual work.
And you're right, that the third phase, you know, in a future conversation down the road, theoretical future conversation, you know, the task force would like, at that time, having that a fair amount of time has passed since that large group was created, might need to assess schools more robustly again, because there were schools that were right on the line at the time that we created the first list, that might need reassessing because time has passed, and potentially, some of them are in worse shape over the course of many years. So, that third phase would certainly be one in which we would have to reopen the conversation on a broader scale. At this time, we had a solid number of established schools that we know need work.
So, I need to move on to, Miriam has not had an opportunity to ask questions yet, so.
Thank you.
I think everyone's had some time, so.
Will you go last? Do you have a chance to reflect? There's a lot. But let me start by saying, thank you so much for spending time with me yesterday, especially after the building site visits, to answer so many of my questions. And I've had a chance to think about that, and I just have some clarifying points, and maybe a few questions, that I, most have actually been answered, but just give me a minute as I go through my notes. I do want to also say that I think I understand what you're saying, Kelly, about stretching our dollars and trying to do the most we can, and I agree with you, and I appreciate it. And I look forward to those discussions. Thank you for the, I really appreciate connecting the board to the design process for the facilities, because I know that there is a community, to get community support, that we have to recognize that there is some anxiety with architectural integrity, because of the location of the schools, and they're over 100 years old, and all that, and I'll just, I see that we have 29 voting members, and it looks like 25 voted in the final tally, so that's, that's a good turnout. Okay, so some of this may be for you, John. So, if there isn't a bond, like, let's just pretend like we're not having this discussion, the levy's not going to change, right? It's going to be like that for 18 years. By bringing this bond on, we go to 22 years, we add four years to it. The levy, the debt levy is part of the total levy, right? This is like a two-part thing, just kind of hang in there with me. So, we, in our estimation, we're not asking for an increase in a debt service levy. However, with assessments, we all know they're going to go up. People will be paying more taxes, right? Unrelated, even if there was no bond, everyone's going to pay more taxes, because that's just the reality we're coming to. If some catastrophe happens in five years, and everybody's assessments go down, I'm not even talking about this bond, just in general speaking, about debt service levy. If the housing market tanks, we will have to raise our levy to honor our debt. Correct?
Potentially.
So far, potentially. So, I'm not even talking about this bond yet. So, potentially, you know, five years from now, to honor the debt we carry from past years, we might have to raise the levy. So, following that logic, in the ensuing assessment years, we move into this with the idea that we're not changing the levy, but it's possible that in 10 years, we might have to raise it in order to honor our obligation. but it's possible that in 10 years, we might have to raise it in order to honor our obligation. I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm trying to understand it because you go into this with the language. So I, I guess what I'm saying in my mind, we're not asking the public to vote or to get behind, you know, an increased same levy, decreased levy. Our intent is to keep it the same, but we don't really know what's gonna happen. So what we're really are looking for support is, hey, hey, are we ready to shake on more debt? That's really the, the central question. Am I, am I approaching this?
You're summing it up pretty good.
Did I sum that up? Okay.
Just so the board understands that whenever we take a bond amount to the public, the amount is always an estimated amount, okay? Based on what we, historical assessed valuation, and what we believe it will take to pay off that debt, okay? So last time, when the district ran an 18-cent increase, it was actually worded an estimated 18-cent increase, right? If for some reason, assessed valuation did not continue with historical trends and it went the other direction, state statute actually gives the taxing entity the ability to raise that levy to wherever it's needed, not above the ceiling. I think our ceiling is $1.25, $1.25 debt service ceiling. So we couldn't exceed that, but we could raise it above 73 cents, whatever we had to do to pay off the debt.
And the board can do that without taking it to the voters?
That, that is correct, but the board cannot raise it higher than the amount sufficient to pay the debt, right? Okay, so that's why it is very important, when we take a bond issue to the, the voters, that we are conservative with our numbers twofold, okay? So David mentioned that our bond council said we could probably actually go to 240 and not have to raise our levy as long as historical trends continue, right? But we don't wanna, we don't wanna push that. If we're gonna say it's a no-tax levy increase, I got, we want to make sure it's a no-tax levy increase. So that's why we said, okay, 220 is where we feel really good that even if things go south, we won't have to raise that levy, okay? So that's the bond council advising us, saying, taking into account potential market dips and crashes, we feel if you go with this amount, you're solid at 73 cents.
And that presentation was really, really helpful.
Now, and that's kind of what he'll talk about next, next time. Now, the other positive to that is if things trend like they have traditionally or better, then we could actually end up paying, end up paying that debt off early, right? So that's the benefit. So currently, you're right, our 73-cent debt service levy is slated to be in place through 2040. So regardless of whether we run a bond issue or not, regardless of whether it passes or not, the levy will stay the same, estimated, until 2040. I say estimated, it won't be later than that, but it could be earlier if assessed valuation trends better than projected.
Thank you. I, I just had to, you know, we talked yesterday, and I, okay, so just a couple more. So, and this might, this, and feel free to punt this to two weeks from now, might be for Stiefel. But the reason we don't want to, it says, you don't want to decrease the levy rate because it would provide 185 million, but then it would impact the district's bond rating. And so that would be important because then we couldn't get a good rate, right? We can't get a good rate, okay? So I just wanted to understand that. Real quickly, protective glass film on first-floor windows, is that external? Okay, I didn't know if.
Only on the outside.
Oh, on the outside, okay, got it.
Exposed, exposed.
Oh, so like if you have a classroom on the first floor that's like half wood and has glass in it, you would change that glass, is that what you mean?
Yeah, all windows are worth that glass.
External and internal?
From the inside of the external window.
Oh.
External window.
Oh.
External window, you would put it on the outside and the inside on the exterior.
So it is just treating the external window?
Yeah, it's not replacing.
The outside.
I'm sorry, what?
It's not replacing the windows.
It's adding something to it, okay.
It probably could be noted that Jim Farrell spoke about how they had tested it, and they were very, very impressed with it. So it's not something that they haven't already seen, they've seen it, seen the reaction.
Okay, and all my questions on Pipkin, and I had a lot on Pershing, thank you guys. Discussion, they all got answered, and I think I'm down to my last one. And this has to do with the, with the dissent vote. And, and before I ask my question, which has been partially answered, I want to clarify this because I learned this, and I don't, I just want to make sure, they probably know it because they've been going to these meetings. Just because we pass a, because I'm one of those really concerned about the economy and where we're going and how we're, because, you know, everyone's taxes are gonna go up. Not our fault, right? It has nothing to do with a bond issue. They're just gonna go up because your assessed value, values are gonna go up. But, which means bond rates will go up, right? So we could hit this at a really bad time, right? And which is what this dissent vote, you know, is, I mean, that's not what they're thinking, but it falls in line with why not delay this to 2024? So my understanding is, if bond passes, we're under no obligation, if the market is really bad, to move forward with it. We've got the yes, but we don't have to go sell those bonds. We could wait until conditions are better, right? That's correct?
There's nothing that requires us to sell the bonds immediately or to sell all of the bonds at once. At the same time, if, taking neighborhood passes and the rates are still pretty good, then we're in a position to take advantage of that, you know, right then. So, so yes, we have the flexibility to adapt to the market if it's not what we want. Same thing with, when we bid a project, we bid it, and it comes in higher than anticipated, we're under no obligation to proceed with the project.
Right, so this is getting permission from the voters to take on more debt, but in no way is it detailed on how this, this, it, we, we're gonna do it the best way we can, the cheapest way we can. So just, okay, so with that clarifying comment, and I know you already said that you would prefer November, latest December, but it'd not be preferred, but it could go as late as early January to get in a final official on the verbiage and on every little detail. And I think that would, and I understand this particular stance on to allow the board to complete their strategic planning process, and you talked about this. And I think that it would allow us, I think the timing, since my understanding is we're gonna complete that process by December. You know, we can walk and chew gum at the same time, so that this would allow us to appease that piece. Because I think it is important, when you go to the taxpayers, to say, "This is our commitment to you." Does that, does that make sense? Not just the optics, but in, in its, the actual effort of not just new buildings. I mean, we've had many speakers come and talk to us about, hey, are we improving achievement? Are we improving achievement? And yes, this is our plan. So it's like Plan A and Plan B going up together. So, so do you see that as, that could happen, December, kind of side by side?
Kind of David, Bridget speaking, I didn't see that as a major theme from the task force. I, one or two people have felt that way. And I'm not sure how in tandem necessarily those two items will be. I think there will be some overlap. I think the strategic plan and what we're trying to accomplish with facilities. But at the end of the day, we know the needs are there in facilities regardless of whatever we establish in the strategic plan. And now.
It's not a matter of need, it's a matter of getting voters behind it.
Sure, I, well, I understand that. I'm just saying, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how much they rely on each other. But at the end of the day, you know, we do anticipate having our grant in December, a strategic plan. So, I mean, it should be pretty well aligned, I would think.
And then last, so we had this email, I don't know if everybody read it, that, so the dissenting vote, and I guess there were four or three, I can't remember now, for August 2024. And I didn't understand, can you just, what, what was the reason for that? What, what did, what did those individuals? I just want to make sure I'm hearing everybody's collective thoughts.
So, so first, understand the process. What we do is we, on every question, we would take a, the initial vote. So everybody got to weigh in. That was that straw poll I was talking about. And on the straw poll, you saw some, and again, I can't remember whether it was three or four, whatever that number was, it was, there were some who said is, hey, let's go to either August or let's go to next April in 2024.
And they were, so they were, one of the arguments, and we have a couple people on the task force right here, one of their arguments was to do November, 2024. So we had a discussion about, there were a couple of people that had dissenting opinions. I don't know, the vast majority selected April 2023, but a few people did have other suggestions.
Those reasons were because?
So, so there's a few reasons. One is because whenever you look at, it requires different rates or thresholds of an election depending on the time of year that you take it, and really even based on whether it's an odd or even year.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. A lot of, a lot of things I learned about that.
Just odd or even year. I knew there was a difference between November and April, but I didn't know August had its own.
It's odd or even, and you have a different, depending on what's an odd or even year.
So, so there was some.
April is consistent, though.
Oh, April's consistent, okay.
So, yeah, so there was some discussion about that, yes. Okay, so does it make more sense to, for example, move it to whenever there's gonna be a higher voter turnout rather than a lower voter turnout for the election? So for example, in November, this November, for example, you would have, you know, significantly higher, we would expect voter turnout because it's, you know, midterm elections for US Congress and stuff. So, you know, there's, so that's why you can look at that differently as far as what's the right timing to take that. So I, I kind of go back to is, you know, we had the one dissenting which really said is, the opposition that said is, even after the discussion, oh, I really feel like is, you still need to go in April of 2024. So we did have that one. And again, specifically, the reasoning that was, that was entered into the record is the result of that is waiting for the strategic plan to be completed. And then also is to be able to look at if there was any redistricting, I think was the other reason.
It was about the right sizing.
Oh, yeah, there, there you go. Yeah, and so as part of that, so that was really the reason for that.
Wasn't, they weren't the individuals, it wasn't because of economics? Like, waiting to see how the markets unfold?
You know, I will say, there was some discussion about that, certainly.
Okay.
But that was not the specific reason as to why for the dissenting, you know, and it. But there, there was discussion, but as we walked, as we walked through that, we really said is, you know, no matter what, you're always gonna have that question mark about what's coming or what's next. Ultimately is.
It's kind of a special time right now.
You know, yeah, we do, you know, we do. And, and certainly that was considered, though, and.
So that did come into the discussions and everything?
Oh, absolutely.
That was part, okay.
A bigger discussion, yes, but not necessarily for just the dissenting vote.
Yeah, no, you're in the process.
I just wanted to see, thank you. And that concludes all my questions, thank you.
I appreciate it.
So I'll just wrap it up, and that was one of my questions. What was magical about waiting to 2024 versus 2023? Because we have buildings in need, and they're not gonna repair themselves.
And actually, Sophia provided.
And I thought her comments were.
Her, she actually provided a response to this dissenting opinion that was a strong case for, these needs are not going away, they're, cannot predict the future, but we do know that kids in Pipkin are in, this flight is insane.
It is very crazy.
It is, it all of us tonight, that the, that the circumstances of those school buildings are not going to get better between April 2023 and April 2024, and that the students deserve to learn in quality learning environments that are as efficient and effective as possible for them.
I, I think all those of us that are not in the schools, okay, what's a year? But for our students, this is their year. I mean, this is their year in that building, and so we want to make sure that learning opportunity is optimal for them. I mean, I know there's some.
And it's not really a year, I mean, you're delaying an additional year. So you're already looking at probably a two-year, maybe a.
You can't build middle schools in like.
Right, so, so you're really talking a few years down the road.
But what I'm looking, right, what I'm looking at for those students at Hillcrest that were able to do Phase 1 and 2, and so they're gonna have that opportunity that could have been down the road for them because we didn't wait. Because I remember back when we had these discussions with 2008, and that, there was also, that came up. Well, why now? Let's wait. So it was always like, well, what are we waiting for? Well, this could happen, and that could happen, and this could happen. We could still be waiting. We could still be discussing, well, this cost went up, and this cost went up. And so we, you know, our kids, the kids that are in the buildings, they don't have the time to wait where some of us can wait. But, so I, I understand all that. That was one of my questions. And my other one was, during the discussions on renovation versus rebuilding, was there any reflection on the last decision to renovate a couple of our buildings? That we started renovation and then got into the process and realized that that wasn't gonna work? So we ended up rebuild, and one of our renovations took much longer than we thought to renovate, and we might have decided to rebo, was that discussed at all? And I'm talking about Williams and.
Sunshine.
And China.
So let me just say, we had some discussion on that, not an extensive amount, frankly. The reality is, we're looking at it from a much higher level than that.
Sure.
Travis might be very unhappy with doing renovations because of the additional unknown that he doesn't know. And, and as his comment was earlier, we were talking yesterday with Pershing, it's like, so where do you stop? That's the challenge that he runs into with renovation. And certainly sometimes you can look back in hindsight and says, well, maybe new would have been a better choice for that. Which is what we ran into with Williams, and ultimately decision was is go with new. I say we, it's really you guys that did that. So, so I would say is there's always that unknown, whenever you have new, you reduce the unknowns. Yet at the same time is, whenever we looked at these is, you know, whenever we compared cost as well as the new, ultimately is, we made the decision of one versus the other. As a recommendation, ultimately, the board may get there and say, it's, okay, we want to change that. And we, we get that because y'all have more information than maybe we did, but with ours, we.
And we did, you know, as a board back, and we did have to, you know, wade into and get more hands-on and get more information and make some of those changes as more information was available for us as we got into some of those projects, so.
And Pipkin and Reed were good examples of buildings that were very old, a lot of potential unknowns. With Pershing, it was a little bit of a different situation because the building is not nearly as old. And also, the difference between a renovated Pershing and a new Pershing was really significant. So that was sort of the, the thinking behind the task force.
Well, we have had you up there for a very long time.
I have one quick question.
Maryam says one quick question, so we're gonna hold it to.
It is just for you guys. So, I'm sorry, I forgot earlier. So Dr. Prater mentioned something that I didn't understand. He said, "We," and I thought he meant "we" as in the task force. And we're gonna do this again, raise funds for a bond campaign. I didn't, can you explain that?
I can explain that. So Dr. Prater also helped with the Yes on S campaign, which is a separate effort.
Oh, okay.
Independent of the school district.
So that's not a task, that's not your thing?
No.
Okay, so that's just a whole nother entity, not us, independent. Okay, got it, thanks.
He served in two.
I'll ask you later.
David and I did not serve on the Yes on S campaign because our goal was to educate the public, and so we focused primarily, got him on that. He, he had, he kind of took up two jobs there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
After he was done with the task force.
Okay, great. So I think we've got some questions and got some work to do, and, and we have two weeks. So any other questions that come forward you want to bring forward? Or you want to set up a time to have additional for? And David and Bridget, we can begin to tell you thank you. I mean, we can tell you thank you, but we can't begin to express our thanks because you have not only served all this time volunteering, time away from your families, time away from your jobs, because I know you've answered a lot of phone calls and you've answered our questions. But in addition to the task force, you've come back and you've taken tours with our board members and now were not able to serve on the task force and answered numerous questions. And here you are again, and I kind of have a feeling you might have some more questions to answer as we move forward. But thank you again, just thank you for stepping up and doing this work for us. And, and truly coming forward as we have no opinion but to bring you what we hear from the people that you worked with. So it was my pleasure to get to serve with you the first time around. It was very hard for me to step away and not get to serve this time around, but we had. had some great representation with our new board members. So thank you very much and let you go for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enjoyed it. We enjoyed getting to know you all.
Yeah, getting to know you.
I'm taking your laptop.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so now we're going to move on to, kind of hard to follow that. So we're going to move on now to 7.01, change orders and agreements.
Do you mind if I...
Not here, that's for 220 minutes.
Oh, okay, so we, we need to take a quick break.
Thank you.
We'll come back at 8:30. Sorry, we're ready to come back into order. So Dr. Shaw?
Oh, Dr. Mulford. Everything's different online. Can I just shut it down?
Is this thing highlighted?
Okay. But it's still weird.
We're going to pick up with change orders and agreements.
So standard report that you have in front of you, represented from Field Project, we'll see some change orders here from Hillcrest as well as Jarrett, totaling $90,549.45. Field has approximately $27,000 for it, Hillcrest approximately 43, Jarrett approximately 11. And there is one change order for some additional testing and materials inspections for Jarrett. When we receive those contracts from those consultants, they give us an estimate at the beginning of the project of what they expect. Sometimes they're under, sometimes they're over. In this situation, there's been some additional concrete testing needed as well as some right-of-way areas along Portland Street for that, and that's why that addition is there. We are, see the finish line on these projects, and so we're working through these. I will note that with these change orders, these all fit within the estimated budget that we put together at the beginning, so that's all still within that, but they are change orders to what that original contract was, no different than every time I present this to you. So are there any questions that you have at this time?
I do have one. In follow-up to my email question about, I guess just to clarify or to reiterate that email, was that there were three categories of change orders, basically design error, contract error, owner error.
Owner omission.
Right? So in the event that one of these is either a design error or contract error, are we still paying for those?
Right. So if it's, so in all architect contracts, they have errors and omissions is what they call it. And so if something is left out, or there was something designed incorrectly to where it has to be done a different way, as long as it's not, if it hasn't been bid in the original contract, then obviously that's a change order. So if they leave something out and it has to be in the construction, the general or the subcontractor would have bid it that particular way if it was there, he didn't, so it wasn't part of his bid, so therefore it is a change order that we paid for. I had difficulty in the beginning of this process three years ago, understanding that myself, but as we continue working through this, one thing we have to understand and realize is that general contractors, architects, engineers, owners, none of us are perfect and we will make mistakes through the process. So when things are omitted, or for example, the things with Hillcrest was, there was something about the new construction adding the tie-in to the science wing, and there was, there was detail left out from the architect that wasn't there. Therefore, it wasn't bid by the contractor. Now we pay for that here instead of what was in the original bid. And so I know it's kind of a long entry question, but as long as it's something that work wasn't done and then it had to be redone, in that case, no, we would not pay for that. We had a situation like that early on in Jarrett, where there was some drain, drain pipe that was running from second floor, and the subcontractor installed it per the specifications. Once it was done, it was realized that can't be done that way, therefore it had to be redone. The owner did not pay for that. That was a responsibility of the architect to take care of.
Yeah, that makes sense. So if it was, if it was left off as something we should have paid for all along, then we pay for it, but if it caused us additional expense, then there would be some responsibility on their end to come in.
Sometimes it's the contractor, sometimes it's the architect.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so tonight, you know, this is our study session, this is an action item. So we do need to move forward, take action on this. So at this time, do I have a motion that the board approve the change orders and agreements as presented? So my... Thank you, Danielle. I'm going to have a second. I should read that. So at this time, please vote.
See, my screen just looks different.
Did it come up? It is. Did it come up?
I don't know what the... It's just the angle. See, yeah, mine isn't black anymore.
Great, okay. Motion passes, so we'll move on. 8.01, superintendent's update.
Yes, thank you. We had a great time Saturday supporting MSU Bears. SPS participated in the tailgate party. We had more than 250 people that visited our tent. So thank you, board members and members of the leadership team for helping out on Saturday and for cooking. And also a very special thank you to Arvis Bank for allowing us to utilize their grill to cook all the food. So it was a wonderful event. Registration has opened for our next SPS University event. It will be held on Thursday, November 10th at Glendale High School. So registration is now open. Today, we recognize Jamie Hart. She's a special education teacher at Cherokee Middle School, and she was our Teacher Proud Tuesday recipient. And she has been with SPS for 11 years. So it was great to recognize her today, and we do that once a month where we recognize a teacher in the district. So once again, congratulations to Jamie Hart.
That concludes my announcement.
Oh, the Hall of Fame luncheon. Just a reminder, that's next Thursday, October 20th at 11:30 at White River Center. If you're interested in purchasing tickets, please see the communications department. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I didn't, was not able to attend last Saturday's big event at MSU-SPS game, but I would like for a couple of you to make a comment that I know haven't a chance to attend. I think that's the first time in, I can recall, that Springfield had, that our school district had an event there, a tailgate there. And so I think that's a great partnership with MSU and SPS. So anyone on our board that attended?
I can comment. I was there. It was, it was a good time. I took my kids and looked like it was well-attended. And yet again, I'm always impressed to see the same faces working after hours on weekends and evenings. It seems like it's never-ending. So it was much appreciated and it was a good time.
Good. Who were our cooks? Who were the cooks?
Travis. Travis.
John, did you cook?
I did not. I played cornhole.
Okay. You played cornhole with who?
With my seven-year-old son. It was a tight match.
I was going to say, who won that? So, okay.
Actually, it came down to the end, Dr. Hackenworth, what did you hit?
Dr. Ray. Oh, look at you. Sorry, I missed it.
Accidentally.
Well, they look alike.
Four holes in a row, I think.
That's Dr. Lathan's husband was one of the cooks.
That's awesome.
We had a good time.
And who else cooked? And Granitas, and Dr. Lathan's husband. That's so awesome. Great. And then anyone else get a chance? Well, I hope this happens next year. I'm going to say this on my...
I hope they win next year. We had a good time.
Yeah, that's great. Good. Okay, and then our upcoming meetings. Oh, and so board, and, well, I guess I just jumped right on into board comments, so. Board members, any comments that you would like, anything you've attended or anything you'd like to share? Steve, you had a good thing? Did I see your glasses go up?
No.
Sorry. It's like being in an auction. Don't make a move or I may take your bid, so.
I don't have any comments.
And Shreeda, did you want to make a comment now that you had mentioned earlier? Okay. Good?
I did one more.
Absolutely.
I want to say thank you to the Breast Cancer Foundation of the Ozarks. I served as their emcee last Friday night. I don't know if they'll ever do that again, but it was a wonderful fundraiser. Also, this Friday is our pink-out day. We'll be wearing pink across the district. I want to thank our district staff members that told their story via video. We're glad to share that out with also board members, but it went out last Friday to all of our district staff. So everyone has a story, and please continue to support the Breast Cancer Foundation of the Ozarks.
What day was that? Tuesday? Friday?
This Friday.
Pink-out. Okay, great. You could get your hair dyed pink. That has happened. So, okay, so, and then our upcoming meetings, we have our regular meeting, October 25th, and our bond specialist expert, Dr. Bobbins will be here. It's Dr. Bobbins. And then we, our next meeting after that will be our November 15th, will not be our study session, but it will be our board retreat, and we will have EGL here to assist us or to share with us our strategic plan feedback.
They're also here on the 25th.
Oh, and they're here on the 25th as well.
We have EGL on the 25th and also EGL on the 15th. Remember, 25th will just be introduction, getting ready for an...
They'll be here both times?
Yes, they will be here both times.
So I'll be prepared for some fall learning. Okay. Anything else?